On the process now or wait until then?
I think you should wait until then.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else to public participation? Okay. The first thing I want to mention is congratulations to Dr. Conti. As most of you know by now, he's the recipient of the, now this is a pronunciation difficulty, the Christos Daulas Award for Excellence, given by the Mass Association of School Superintendents annually to acknowledge the most outstanding superintendent of schools in the state of Massachusetts. So I want to congratulate Dr. Conti on that and open it to the committee if anyone wishes to comment.
I just wanted to say congratulations. I think I already wrote that in an email.
Okay. Tom? Where'd you go? Mr. Murphy? Martha?
I, I think it's wonderful. I'm glad other people recognize what a great superintendent we have. Congratulations, Eric.
Ms. Foss?
Congratulations, Dr. Conti.
I don't know where Mr. Murphy went, but if he comes back, he can say what he wants. Eric, we're very proud of you. I think it's nice that you've been recognized. We've known right along what a gem you are. Moving. Go ahead.
No, thank you. Let's, let's, we have an agenda.
He's always so shy when he gets, Tom, did you want to say anything about that award?
Yeah, it was gonna take like 45 minutes, if that's okay.
Yeah, go for it. Go ahead.
No, obviously, congratulations and I don't want to embarrass him anymore by dragging it out further.
Thank you.
Okay. The coronavirus update from the superintendent.
Madam Chair, the, I'm gonna suggest, I have a presentation that's gonna talk about the reopening, so I think it's all gonna be included there. Can we just begin with the Equity Committee update?
Sure. Equity Committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna turn it over to Patrick. And Sarah, I believe, but go ahead, Patrick.
Thank you. Through the chair, I am gonna turn it over to Sarah Shake, who is one of our student representatives, who has been at, I think we've had four virtual meetings and hats off to Sarah in Propty Shaw, who have been at, who have been two students that have been at every one of our virtual meetings, and I think actually in-person meetings over the course of the year, so I just want to give credit to them. I also want to commend Sarah. I know it's not typical for the student school committee rep from the high school to participate in summer meetings, but she's a member, she does that. And as a member of the Equity Committee, I asked her to do the update.
Excellent. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Larkin. I wanted to give you guys a report right now, so I'm just gonna reintroduce myself. My name is Sarah Shake. I'm the student representative for the school committee through the student council. And today I'd like to make a report on the behalf of the Burlington Public Schools Equity Committee. First and foremost, I want to thank Martha Simon and Carl Foss for joining our Equity Committee meeting last week. In this meeting, we discussed the draft of our action plan. Some key points that the action plan states were that we need to hire anti-racist educators and more educators of color. We need to hire and we need to create an inclusive working environment for educators of color. We need to make sure that the entire faculty and staff of our schools are trained in equitable practices. We need to provide a safe environment for our BOPO C students in, in our schools through affinity groups, which we discussed in our last meeting. We need to also establish a protocol for students addressing racist words and actions in person or through social media, because we recently found many incidents through social media, so we would like to set up a protocol for that. As you can see, all of these are many goals and actions that are needed to truly build equity in our schools, and it will be a lot of work. In fact, the Equity Committee spent the last week's meeting discussing the reality that if we want this, the work to be done, we need to prioritize hiring a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. This person would be a permanent, would have a permanent district level position, where it's their responsibility to lead Burlington into a journey where BIPOC students feel safe, represented, and respected in our schools. So I urge all of you to make this a priority for hiring in the 2020-2021 school year. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Okay. Patrick, do you have more?
No, I just want to again thank Sarah for her willingness to be available for all of our meetings. I think the student voice is hugely important in this conversation, because nobody understands what it's like to be a student of color more than our students of color in the school, so to have their voice is obviously a huge part of this, so thank you, Sarah. And if anyone else, I know both Carl and Martha attended, and I also know, I believe there's some other folks that are attending tonight that may want to comment.
Martha?
I want to thank you, Sarah, for a really succinct and beautiful summary of what we discussed at the meeting. Thank you for that. And I also wanted to ask after this report if perhaps we wanted to move out of, in a different order.
Yes, I've got that covered.
Got that. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments for Sarah? You did a great job, Sarah. Keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, the, what Martha was referring to is the anti-racism resolution, which I would like to take out of order and move to right now. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will read the School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution. I believe the source of this is the Mass Association of School Committees. Okay. Whereas, as schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil right of obtaining a free and appropriate public education, it is the responsibility of each school to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And whereas, it is the responsibility that every district provide to all district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas, every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas, every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic racialized practices and implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas, every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by Black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas, we as a school district leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate that continue to plague our public and private institutions, be resolved that Burlington Public Schools and all the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded and practiced for our students, families, faculty, and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist, that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter, period. It is recommended that the School Committee approve the anti-racism resolution.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have said many things before, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time tonight, and I definitely support this. I think this is a statement that we want to make as a school committee, and I do. And I think the next thing is sort of how do we do it, which is the other question that is coming up. But I think this is a very important statement to make, that we can then look to what are our next steps. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, so let's vote on the motion. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, which I think we all very much approve of. Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye, so that's five-zero, and we hereby adopt the anti-racism resolution. Mr. Foss, you have, you're telling me there's a question on Facebook Live?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's maybe better answered when we talk about school reopening, but I just want to make you aware of it.
Was that the question that you just sent me?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Martha, did you have something else now?
I, I'm just noticing that there's two people who put their names in on the chat. I'm done commenting on the resolution.
So Martha Duffield?
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, hi.
I don't know, because you moved the resolution around, if it was time to, for me to share the letter that we wrote?
Yes, it is time now.
Okay, great. My name is Martha Duffield, and I am the spokesperson for Burlington Against Racism, BAR. BAR is a dedicated group of Burlington residents, for the parents of children that are current or former students in the district. We believe in the necessity of anti-racism education for all members of the school district, including faculty, staff, students, and parents. Many of our statements will echo Sarah's comments and
red flyer, radio flyer things that we had for 125 months.
Where's the background noise coming from? Okay, go ahead.
And we applaud the Burlington Public Schools Anti-Racism Resolution that was just passed. We issued this open letter to appeal to the Burlington Public Schools Superintendent and the Burlington School Committee to create an anti-racist Burlington Public Schools committed to racial justice by hiring a full-time Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. In June of this year, Burlington High School alumni courageously shared their experiences living with racism in our Burlington Public Schools this past Friday, July 17th, 2020. Burlington Public Schools appropriately and publicly condemned recent racist behaviors exhibited on social media by Burlington Public Schools students. These incidents of racism are unacceptable and confirm an urgent need for anti-racism transformation in our schools and communities. We represent students, alumni, faculty, administrators, parents, elected officials, faith-based members of our community, who are committed to equity for all students. Equity means setting consistent high expectations, providing access to opportunities, and allocating the resources that every student needs to achieve educational success, feel valued, and contribute to a thriving community. We appeal to the Burlington Public Schools to focus on eliminating systemic racism and its impact on student learning. The Burlington Public Schools Equity Committee has begun to develop an action plan to address systemic inequities. Key aspects of this plan are to hire a full-time Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, conduct a systemic equity audit, provide professional development for faculty and staff, examine curriculum for an equitable plan, establish an incident response plan and tracking system, recruit, hire, and retain teachers and staff who are Black, Indigenous, and persons of color, and to create accountable and transparent systems. We applaud the work of the Burlington Public Schools Equity Committees and the creation of the School Committee Subcommittee on Equity. We are encouraged that the Burlington Public Schools recognizes its fundamental responsibility to create, implement, and enforce plans for racial equity in our schools. However, the reality is that this work is extensive, complex, and time-consuming. It will not happen without an expert focused on championing and guiding the work. If we do not explicitly staff, prioritize, and support these initiatives, then progress is unlikely and failure is imminent. We recommend the creation of a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion position to spearhead these initiatives identified in the Burlington Public School Equity Committee Action Plan. This is an inaugural position that will provide us an opportunity to learn how to best support the evolving needs of our community. Our subsequent progress as a community is contingent on this new leadership and accountability. By hiring a diversity, a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Burlington has the opportunity to join other early leaders, including Acton, Boxborough, Arlington, Brookline, Dedham, Lexington, and Wellesley, in the work of eliminating disparities and student success by building the capacity within the district to develop and consistently implement equitable and anti-racist practices. Burlington Against Racism is committed to partnering with the Burlington Public Schools and the town to take this critical first step. As our nation continues to confront structural racism at its core, Burlington too will act during this extraordinary moment of reckoning and resistance. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working with you on the next steps to make this happen.
Thank you very much. Are there committee comments on this?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I wholeheartedly support this letter, and I'm very happy that it was presented to us tonight. My feelings are that we should pursue this with as much speed as possible. I feel that other school districts are gonna be looking for similar positions, and if we want to avail ourselves of the best candidates, we should make this as high on our priority list as we can.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, I don't disagree with the, with the value. I'm certainly not ready at this stage of the game to I'm not sure anybody was actually looking for action tonight, but I, clearly before we do this, we have some practical issues or problems, namely the budget. We don't have this position in the budget. We're in a position or in a situation where the town has been hinting that they want, wants the different departments to actually cut back on their budget, given everything else that's going on in the world. Clearly, before we took, take a step like this of adding a position to our budget that's not in the budget, I would look for input from the administration in terms of the practical effects, how it would work, the job description, things of that nature. I certainly think we owe the ways and means, the courtesy of having them weigh in on this, clearly. In a tough financial year, we're looking to add to our budget, and I certainly want to hear what they had to say about it. And I think we as a group needed some time to digest the idea, once we get some of this information, and then, then have a full discussion with the background knowledge necessary to make this decision. So I'm not speaking against the merits of the requests, I'm just indicating that in my opinion, we shouldn't rush into this until we get, do our homework a little bit more and get some, get some information. As I mentioned, that I think will certainly assist me in deciding whether this is something to move forward immediately or do we wait till next budget season to do it? So that's my two cents.
So are you suggesting that this go on the next agenda for discussion?
I suggest it goes on a future agenda for discussion, certainly, if, if, I'm fine with next, next time, if the, that gives the administration enough time to give us some, some ideas as to what it's gonna cost, where it's gonna, what the job description might be. Get ways and meanses, feedback on it. I just, with everything that's going on, and we're gonna be talking about it later in our agenda, and it'll be still going on in August. You know, it's a busy time, so if, if we have enough information to talk about it next agenda, I'm fine with that. Let's put it on the agenda. If we need more information and more time at that point, we can always roll it over, but personally, I'm just not ready to talk about the practicalities of this, this evening without knowing a lot more information.
All right, does anyone else have a comment?
I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, Martha.
I also very strongly support the idea of a Director of, I can't say the whole thing, of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. I, I have been to a number of these committee meetings, the district-wide committee meetings, and thinking about all the things that we need to do. And, and what it is, is that we have an institution that's full of staff who are trying to do the right thing. Many staff have been doing really, really good anti-racist work for years, even before I, I know since before I've been on the committee. And, but the number of things, if you listen, as I listened carefully to what Sarah Shake reported from the committee, there just, individual area that she referenced is a huge undertaking. I don't think she ma, I don't even remember, she mentioned curriculum. You know, I mean, there are so many areas that we really need to begin to look. And I, I certainly respect, Tom, what you were saying about needing to look at the budget and where's the money gonna come from, and those are all important things. But we always say that our budget is our values. And the, there is a crisis, there's a pandemic going on in the world, and in Burlington, of COVID-19, but there's also a pandemic of racism in this country, and it has not skipped over Burlington. And I feel that, for example, when COVID, when we closed the schools in March, I, I was gonna ask that the students on the District Equity Committee come to the school committee and talk about what they've done this year. And that all got dropped, until George Floyd was murdered. And, and people are starting to realize that we always put this second or later, or not top priority. So although I have concerns about the budget, I would like to see, ask the administration to look into this, to maybe come up with some proposals of how it might be done. I mean, in the middle of the school year, if we need extra nurses, we have voted in extra nurses. And I'm not comfortable adding positions after we've decided on our budget, and especially this year, where, as you all know, it's not certain what's gonna happen next. So I have those concerns, but I would like to, if the committee is in agreement, ask Dr. Conti to report back to us with ideas of how we might implement this and, and really move forward, because I feel that we can't wait. That this is another pandemic in our country and in our town. Not that everybody has had these same situations, but this is happening to students. If, you know, any one of our students who's being hurt by this is worth us doing this and not saying, well, this will have to wait again, so.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Catherine, do you have anything to add?
Well, again, I, I hope I'm not on the, okay. I, I do agree that I would like to try and move this forward, you know, as quick as we can, because I'm in agreement that it'd be nice to have a Director of Diversity, but I also want to make sure that we do what's fiscally responsible and right for the town, that we need to really get feedback and make the right decision and, and, and do it, if we can do it, or, you know, and as soon as we can, but if we can't, then we need to figure out what works best and when we can do it, and do it as quickly as we can. So again, I think we need to run things past ways and means. We need to really evaluate what we can do. There's gonna have to be, I'm sure, some shuffling that goes on in terms of, you know, the budget, because of what's going on with COVID. We're gonna have a lot of increased costs as far as health, you know, taking care of cleaning the buildings, et cetera. And so we really have to really lay everything out and look at the budget and decide what's best. But again, I, I would love to have a Director of Diversity. I think it would be awesome.
Thank you. So this is really an unusual situation, because I know a lot of you have some information that you've had before now. And for the rest of us, for the school committee, it was an hour and a half ago that I received a copy of this letter for the first time. So this is all very new, and we don't generally put things on the agenda that quickly. I agree that this is a position that we should have and that we should move towards doing it. However, our budget is set, and I think that in order to do this, we would have to get a town buy-in with probably a reserve fund transfer to pay the salary. So going back to what Tom said, I, I believe that he, as well as I, are both in favor of this, but we need more detail. We need to know where would the money come from. We need to know what would the job be, what the details are, how it affects racial inequities, what involvement it has with special education. All kinds of details in a job description, that, none of which we have right now. So I would suggest that we put it on the next agenda, if it fits. That would be up to Dr. Conti. If he can manage it for the next agenda, fine. If not, the first agenda in September. And I don't disagree that we should do it, but we do not have the money at this point in time. So, and with that, I would also like to ask John Isla if he has any comments as a ways and means rep.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'll, you know, certainly the, addressing the issue is important. Obviously, we should consider what's the best way to address it. I understand Ms. Duffield's letter suggests that having a Director-level position is the right way to address this. There may be other ways. I think it would be good for the administration to consider that, whether it requires a dedicated person, if it can be something that an existing role could cover also. And I appreciate Mr. Murphy taking a difficult position of saying that we can't just casually add positions. The reality of these things is, we're looking at the overall town budget, and one of the things we'll be working with the town administrators is, what do we do if our revenues have a substantial hit, like negative 10%? I'm pretty sure adding positions isn't going to be a response that will work in that kind of situation. So like it or not, I think the reality of such a thing is, you're going to have to say, this is important. What is it more important than that you're willing to exchange for? And I understand people don't like making that choice, but the reality is, with a budget that's, with revenues that are likely to shrink, increasing costs is not a good response in that situation. So I wholeheartedly agree that there are issues. There is no doubt, when you look at the employee base, that it's extremely non-diverse. So there are a lot of things to address here. But we, you know, I look forward to the administration presenting a plan that actually works in terms of the dollars and doesn't just increase the budget, because realistically, I don't think you're going to see a lot of report, a lot of support for reserve fund transfers for extra positions or for expanding the budget right now. So I, I would suggest trying to work within that constraint and see what you can come up with as the best way to address this.
Thanks, John. Martha Duffield? You wanted to follow up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a follow-up comment and just remind, you know, you on the school committee that 35% of our population in Burlington identifies as non-white. And so I think that's a really important demographic statistic to remember when we're thinking about these types of decisions and, and what decisions we make and the percentage of the population that it actually services. I also think, you know, when we talk about this, I think it's really important to be sensitive to the people who are feeling and being treated in ways that are unfair and are being hurt with the systemic issues of racism, because it's very different when you are on one side of those comments and it, and then when you're on the other. And I would love to make sure that all students feel safe in this community.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that. One thing I also wanted to ask Dr. Conti, when you, when you have the opportunity to develop what you think is the best job description and the best plan and how to find, how to get money, because I know the budget's tight. how to get money, because I know the budget's tight. I wondered, like John mentioned, if there might be, especially with all, everything we're going through with the upheavals of COVID, if there are any people that are already in the administration that might be able to take this on. But I, I'm not suggesting anything or anyone, I'm just saying, please think about the staff we already have because I know there are a lot of people who think we have too much staff. So I would, as a, as a closing, I would say if there is room on the next agenda and if you have the answers for us for the next agenda, please put it on. If not, please put it on the following one.
Sure, Madam Chair, I think this is a really important conversation, I think it's an important position. And I think to Mr. Isla, to your point, you're seeing this more as a substitution than an addition. So I just think I need some time to, to work on a, on a substitution. But I agree with the urgency and, and will, we, again, I would have every intention on getting it on the next agenda for the committee and getting you the information you need ahead of the committee so that we can try to move forward.
One last thing, just a comment that I want to make to someone who's, who's commenting in the chat. We do not have an opportunity for a placeholder. Our budget for next year is set, it is cast in stone. And there's no place for a placeholder until our next budget cycle, which begins in January. Okay, so is there anything else on this item before we move on?
I, I'd just like to add a comment from the chat, if there are people listening in or watching, that I, I think, Martha Duffield, you said that 140 members of the community have signed on to this letter this week. Is that accurate? And what groups, could you mention which groups they represent or are part of?
Sure, so yep, 140, we have Burlington Against Racism, the Burlington Public Schools Equity Committee, but also additional faculty and staff have signed on. We've got over, we've got a bunch of town meeting members who have signed on, someone from the Town Planning Board, from Black Burlington, from CPAC. We have interfaith clergy members who have signed on. We have Healing Meals, Help Us. We have some from the soccer organization. We have a myriad of parents and then many alumni and students who are active within the high school on communities such as the Multicultural Club, the Tenacity Challenge, African American Student Association, Asian American Student Association, and members of the Women's of Burlington High School.
All right, thank you. Eric, so we'll look forward to a really clear job description, a finite description of what this position would be and ideas on who could fill it if there's anyone already in the system and where to get the money if we have to go outside. Okay, moving on. What's next? Do, do you want to go back to the, what do you, Eric, what do you want to do next?
Let's do the school reopening plans, please.
Okay, go for it.
I'm going to, I have some slides I'd like to go through, I'll try to do that as quickly as I, as I can. And then I'm sure there'll be lots of comments and potentially some questions afterwards. I just would like to say we are, Patrick and I will be presenting at BCAT on 6:30 on Thursday. And we'll be also accepting questions through Facebook during that presentation as well. So we'll present some of the same information if people are worried about seeing it again, or we're going to try to present this in as many different ways as we can. So Bob, you're, you're running the, the computer, so. Bob, is there a presentation mode or is that it? So I just want to go through some of the process, so Bob, if you could get to the next slide. So we obviously have been working on some of these things, some of these challenges for a while. Prior to the end of the school year, we, we put out some guiding principles that were public at the last school committee meeting. We've conducted some parent and staff surveys. The state released their initial guidelines in, sort of since the last meeting. The state prioritized in-person instruction and asked every district to conduct a feasibility study, which we've done. The state is also requiring three draft plans to be submitted on 7/31. The three draft plans would be a full remote, a full return and a hybrid for every school in the district. We've had groups of administrators and teachers translating state guidelines into a potential reality. The needs of each building are so specific. If all of our buildings were the same design or the same square footage or the same enrollment, our planning might be a little bit different than it has been. But especially across our elementary schools, the buildings are so different that individual planning was just really critical. We're getting some initial parent feedback through school councils and PTOs this week on some of our draft ideas. The state released health protocols last Friday, we're still going through the health protocols. What to do if a student has a fever, what to do if a student identifies as being, having a positive test, what to do if a staff member has a positive test. So we are looking at those protocols. More than likely, those are going to result in a parent handbook for the fall, sort of a new parent handbook. The state is really relying on families to do a lot of the health screening of students before they come to school. So we need to educate families on what their responsibilities are. We're initiating a district working group. So now that we have some school-based input and some input from teachers and administrators, we've been generating questions, there are many questions that are common. So we're going to put together a district working group to answer these questions and to help with communication moving forward. We have tonight's school committee meeting and then, as I mentioned, we have a BCAT forum on, on Thursday. So I just want to go through some of the details with, with each of these events that are happening. We're still waiting on transportation guidance, so the state is, hasn't released transportation guidance in terms of number of students on a bus or other, other health-related decisions we need to make. And then we're also waiting for an advisory on specials and athletics. So how can chorus happen, how can band happen? So we haven't received that information yet from the state. So Bob, if you could go to the next slide, please. Again, I'm not going to read our guiding principles, I think our guiding principles have been put on the website. I think we, we talked about some of these at the school committee meeting. I've gotten some input from parents about adding some guidelines and some, some guiding principles. And we added to them, there've been some language suggestions. I think we've taken almost all the input that we've received into the guiding principles. These are evolving and changing. What's been reaffirming for the guiding principles is having regular conversations with my colleagues in the area, certainly across the Middlesex League. And we're sharing resources. So some of the slides tonight are borrowed from other presentations in other districts, again, with permission. And I think some of our colleagues in neighboring communities have also borrowed from our guiding principles. So it's been, it's, we've received some positive feedback on, on the guiding principles within Burlington, but also outside of, outside of Burlington. So Bob, could you go to the next slide, please? And again, we will post the presentation again on the website if people want to review the slides or the content. So, so the initial state guidance was released on June 25th. And again, the first step was a feasibility study, what is possible? And districts were responsible for developing reopening plan with three possibilities, as I stated. In-person learning, hybrid and remote learning. And the state was asking us to focus on planning the feasibility to return to full in-person learning, given their other health guidelines. So again, our initial work was on feasibility and the state wanted us to prioritize in-person learning as part of that feasibility. Next slide, Bob? So we obviously looked at a bunch of different opportunities or, or challenges with the feasibility that were mentioned in the state guidelines. But certainly at the center of all of our feasibility studies was, was the focus on staff and student health and safety. So I just wanted to represent that we looked at a lot of different areas, but we really had as a central part of our feasibility study, the staff and student health and safety. So Bob, could you do the next slide, please? I wanted just to briefly mention that people, what a, a lot of my colleagues talk about as, is a risk and sort of the view of risk. I just wanted to say we're sort of looking at risk from all different perspectives. We are absolutely, absolutely concerned with the risk of getting COVID while attending school by both our students and staff, and we're going to do everything we can to mitigate that. But we also wanted to say there's a risk of, of having students not attend school. And so there's really risk across all the decisions that we make. If it were, if there was no risk associated with remote learning and, and the school committee wanted to eliminate sort of all risk, that might be a decision, but this is an evolving situation. So we're really trying to look at risk across multiple, multiple dimensions, both for the coming back to school and opening schools and also the risk at keeping schools closed. So Bob, if you could go to the next slide. Again, I just wanted to identify some of the risks with keeping students out of school. Loss of learning, social emotional impact of many parents who have written to me or expressed in person that their child is feeling isolated. Again, lack of essential services. We've heard Mary's been working really hard with the CPAC. And again, parents are needing some, are having some challenges themselves. And we also have to make sure that our children are eating, especially those who we provide breakfast and lunch to already. Bob, could you go to the next slide, please? Classroom distancing is a key to our feasibility study. This work was measuring the square footage of rooms. We went in and Bob has a laser measurer and the state provided a tool. This was really sort of basic, how many desks can you fit in to a classroom and at what space? And what sort of classroom furniture do we have? Can we utilize other classroom furniture? This was really sort of a nuts and bolts part of the feasibility study. And we looked at different social distancing spaces from three to six feet. Understanding there's a lot of conversation around the three to six foot continuum. Many communities have said it's a six foot minimum. Again, the state provided us a three to six foot continuum that they wanted as part of the feasibility study. I think one of the more difficult decisions that we will be discussing is what sort of social distancing can we create in our schools? And how is that, how is that impacting the feasibility of each of the plants? So we'll talk about that in a second. Bob, please, next slide. And Bob, you can speak to these slides a little bit because you took the measurements, but we wanted just to show some examples of six foot distancing and the impact that it has on some of our class sizes. So there are classrooms, and Bob, what school is this?
Sorry, where am I right here? How do you get back to that? So, these are, these are not the pictures that I took. But, but what I can, what I can comment on is that, yeah, so our typical classroom size throughout our district is approximately 900 square feet, ranging anywhere from 30 to 30 to 26 by 33. So again, our typical classroom space is about 900 square feet. Our typical classroom size ranges around 18 students. So looking at a six foot distancing with 900 square feet, by the time you put a teacher desk in and 16 students, that's kind of where our scenarios are at. The picture you're looking at right now, which does show the four foot, yeah, it gets a little bit closer, but does bring that number up to 20. So if I go back to a slide prior to that and you look at the spacing on the six foot, you'll see again, that's chair to chair or desk to desk. But you realize that that space in between the students, while not being utilized for actually student seating, does maximize the distance. Looking at a four foot one, which would be this next slide, again, minimizes that space in between, but maximizes, maximizes the amount of students in there. So while we're not showing you every example and pictures right now, we've done these measurements and these examples in all of our schools and we've done them in three foot, four foot, five foot and six foot scenarios. Again, as we can all imagine, a three foot distance, you'll get the most students, but the least amount of distance in between. And then again, the six foot is where it encroaches on the number of students that we could actually put in the classroom.
So it's, in addition to the social distancing, there are other safety measures as well. So we're not looking at just social distancing and nothing else. There's obviously other components like mask wearing, hand washing and cleaning that also, we have to look at the entire package. But Bob, if you could go to the next slide, please? And again, the, the next slide. So the results of our space analysis is, again, we have enough physical space in our buildings to return some students to full in-person, full in-person instruction. And we also could exceed the three foot minimum. But I just want to be clear, we do not have sufficient space to be, be able to return all students to school with six feet of physical spacing. So we, we can't, we can't meet six feet and bring all students, all students back at every building without creating additional classroom spaces or learning spaces. So I think what we can safely say, and Bob, please confirm, I think we talked about, we can probably get between four and five feet. We can, we can exceed the three foot minimum, but we cannot get to six feet and have all students back.
I, I will agree with that, we cannot continue with six foot and get all of our students back, but we could with three foot plus, meet that requirement.
Right, so some, someone is mentioning some students back. We're talking about different levels because we had to do the feasibility at each level. So again, I'm, Bob, if we keep going, I'm hoping this will get clearer, Mr. Schusa. So do the next slide. Actually, let me keep going, I'm seeing questions and I can't do both things at once. So Patrick, do you have your microphone off?
It's on now.
Okay. Do you want to talk to some of the surveying that was done and the results? And I'll have some, some more.
Sure. I did see on Facebook too, somebody saying those pictures weren't from our classrooms. I think we, we know that fact, but it was just to show people again what the six foot distance and what the three foot distance looks like in a classroom setting. But we have been around to all of our classrooms and, and as well. But in regards to the survey, we sent out a brief survey, as everyone knows, last week. And thanks for everyone for responding so quickly. We have over 1,600 parent responses. And the preference, again, I think everybody can probably read it. But my preference today for the mode of school for my student in the fall is 44% said 100% in-person. And then 38% said hybrid and 17% said full remote. And I know, um again, these numbers could certainly change dramatically if there's any changes in the spread of the virus in the state or in the greater Burlington area. Go ahead, Bob. Again, preference for folks. And again, yes or no question, if school opens in a hundred percent in person or hybrid manner, would you send your student to school? And we're trying to get at um which families are a hundred percent out on having their kid attend physical school because of concern. So again, the answer is eighty-three percent, um just over eighty-three percent said they would send their students to school and sixteen percent, uh sixteen point five said no. Okay, Bob. And then again, getting into a hybrid, which um if there's going to be a hybrid, and this is some of the discussion we may get into down the road as we move towards um August tenth, and Dr. Kranti is going to go over this process. I know in some of the following slides, but if we do get into a hybrid conversation where some students would come one day, some students would come another, is typically what that looks like. We're asking families what their preference is, would they rather have their student come on alternating days or alternating weeks? Because we're seeing um communities look at both models right now. And um again, from the early feedback, it seems like, and it makes sense to us, that families would prefer to have their students in school um every week rather than having a whole week out of school. Hey, Bob. And then the but the busing conversation again is one we'll follow up on. I think people want to know more about what busing is going to look like. The transportation guidelines from the state have not come out yet. We are waiting for those. They should be out um very soon. But so again, early indications about people's comfort level sending their children on buses. Of the respondees, twenty-seven percent said yes, they would go on a bus and forty-three percent a strict no. And I think again, the reason people need more parameters, that undecided number is about thirty percent. Hey, Bob. And again, early staff survey, again, we're not holding anyone to any of their responses at this point with so far away from school. And as people have indicated, we're having virtual school committee meetings. Uh somebody's got their mic on in the back. We're having virtual school committee meetings um right now, and we're talking about putting twenty kids in a classroom. We see that clearly, so um here's the early staff, the staff survey. And thirteen percent are eager to come back. Thirty-six percent uh nervous, but they're ready to come back, but they're nervous. Forty percent is hesitant about returning to school. And uh nine percent, so just about, just over fifty percent are either very hesitant or uh they don't want to return at this point. So um again, we'll we'll talk more about that, obviously, um in future meetings, in future planning as well.
So I I just want to be clear on a on a couple of things. The uh the the pictures of the distancing was was my mistake. We had um uh a huge number of pictures and I I selected the um the clearest ones, and um so that was my mistake. Also, our initial task was feasibility. So we understand where as the plans take more shape, we're going to have to resurvey families, resurvey staff. But the state wanted us to um do an initial feasibility and asked us to do sort of a an initial uh survey of parents. So again, um full return is defined by DESI. We said was uh only possible, only feasible at the uh elementary level. And again, that's not with um six foot distancing. We do um meet the three foot minimum. We feel we can get between four and five feet as currently configured. We may need to um add additional classes if we're going to, and additional learning spaces if we're going to get up to the six uh six feet of social distancing. What I mean is defined by DESI is it can be a little bit confusing. DESI considers a full return when um all students are attending when you don't divide the class. So even though the school day is going to look different, if you're not having certain kids attend one day and other kids attend another day, they're calling that a full return. So again, hybrid, we need a hybrid. We need to divide the students into different groups at pre-K, middle and high school to provide the, to meet the the spacing requirements and other safety requirements, the state guidance. And obviously, we have to make remote instruction changes required at all levels. So we need remote plans at every single level. What we're saying is we're working, we're spending most of our time on a full return defined by the state at the elementary level, and we're spending most of our time at a hybrid at pre-K, middle and high school because um it wasn't feasible for us to do a full return. We are still required to submit all three plans on July thirty-first. So we have to do a full return, hybrid and remote, even if we can't feasibly implement a full return at pre-K, middle and high school, we just need to explain why we can't. Bob, next slide. We've had some questions on the uh PPE status in the district. Again, the state issued those guidelines, I think, towards the end of June or early July. We acted right away. We have uh two disposable masks per staff member per day. We have one disposable mask per student per day. We have the additional PPE for nursing and special education staff who require additional PPE, including face shields. We have five hundred and fifty smile masks. Those are masks that allow students to see um their teachers' um faces or mouths. We need to do that if we're teaching language. So we are prepared, and I'm saying in possession of, we're not waiting for delivery of PPE for the first twelve weeks of school using the DESI guidance. So again, we have a PPE for staff and students for the first twelve weeks of school. Um I just want to thank Barbara Conley for her work in acquiring that PPE um early. Many of my colleagues are still waiting on um deliveries. But again, we we have um we have PPE. Bob, next slide. So I want to just go through some draft plans. I am not getting into a huge amount of detail. I just want to give a flavor of uh what's being discussed. Again, teachers and principals and directors worked on trying to make what was feasible real, so we can share some of it. The specific plans are being shared um again with parents through their school council, and we're going to do a broader sharing um as we move forward. No decisions have been made, I'll say that again. No decisions have been made. We are just trying to match what is feasible with um sort of a a real, a real student day. And then we hope as these plans take shape, we will resurvey parents, resurvey staff. The state will be at a different condition then, um whether cases have um increased because of summer activities or decreased. The state could close down schools again. There are many different questions that are are still yet to come that are going to be driven. But we're still working towards submitting three plans on July thirty-first. So Bob, the next slide, please. Burlington Early Childhood Center, the feasibility result was hybrid and remote after measuring their their space. So um one of the early proposals, again with the director and her staff, are for the special education students every day, every week. For the general education, the neighborhood students, um looking at every other week attendance. And then all students would have a remote component um every day. And we'll discuss um why we're sort of having a remote component as part of everything we're doing uh in a few slides. So that's the Burlington Early Childhood Center. Again, Deb Clark will be reaching out to um her her parents specifically with more details. Bob, next slide. Elementary, again, our feasibility study resulted in a full return as defined by DESI. That is, we're trying to educate all students at once. Um and obviously, we need a remote plan as well. And again, I'll just restate what separates a full return from a hybrid is dividing the students. So if we had half the students attend Monday, Tuesday, the other half Thursday, Friday, that's a hybrid. So all students, five days per week, roughly eight to twelve. We have um principals built with their teachers, a literacy block, a math block and a special. Uh students home for lunch with a remote compo- uh component, social studies and science after lunch, four days per week. And that would give us uh Wednesday after- Wednesday afternoons to um do some deeper cleaning um of the of the building. So again, students, five days per week, but a shortened day. We looked at some of the more risky activities during school. Lunch is one of those activities that uh people have a lot of concerns about managing. Masks are off. We're not sure we can guarantee um eating outdoors um every day. So um um our initial plan was, again, to have all students back eight to twelve, um and then send them home for lunch with a remote lesson, science and social studies, four days a week at the um at the uh elementary level. Bob, next slide. Again, the results of the feasibility study were um hybrid and remote. We didn't have enough space to have um all students back um all at once and meet the um initial health guidelines from the state. So we talked about a split schedule, groups A and B, so we would divide the middle school. We talk about two days in person with lunch at home and an afternoon remote component. Day three would, morning would be remote. We would have the afternoon for meetings and cleaning. Again, we're all talking about the same afternoon across the district, which would be a Wednesday, but we're certainly open to feedback. That would give us a day in the middle of the week for extra cleaning. Days four and five would be remote days, and then we would flip groups A and B. So again, group A would have two days in person and um basically two and a half days remote. And then group B would have the other two days in person and then two and a half days remote. And then we would have a group C at the middle school because we have to provide additional education for um certain student groups. So um that's why group C um students may attend additional days in person, so we could have some students attending five days, four days or three days in person, depending on their um needs. So again, the middle school would have three groups, a split schedule and a group um students that could potentially be attending uh student uh school all five days. Bob, next slide, please. Again, the result of the feasibility study for the high school is uh the possibilities uh that we saw, given the space and the enrollment, uh hybrid and remote. So again, a split schedule, groups A and B, two in-person days with lunch at school. And then day three would be a morning advisory with afternoon meetings and cleaning. And days four and five would be two remote days. Again, so we're dividing the school in half. We would flip that uh for the uh other students. And then we also have a group C at the high school, and those students may attend additional days depending um depending on their needs. I know um Mark Sullivan, a principal at the high school, and Carrie at the middle school are speaking to their colleagues like I am uh almost weekly. And um we're not aware currently of any Middlesex League high school that is going back, doing a full return, is planning a full return in the fall. So we're seeing sort of all hybrid plans and um all sort of a split between in-person uh and remote. So Bob, could you do the next slide, please? I might, I want to talk about remote, uh particularly, we have to have remote plans again at every level. We did receive feedback on a remote um uh experience in the spring from parents, teachers and students. I sort of distilled that into uh four areas, structure, consistency, content and delivering more content and providing feedback on student work. And a lot of our uh thinking has been proposing that our hybrid and full return schedules would match our remote schedules at the elementary, middle and high school level. So I just want to take a minute to explain that. So if you um think about the elementary day where we have students in basically from eight or eight-ten till till um noon and then lunch, and then a remote activity in the afternoon of social studies and science, that the state closed schools and we had to go fully remote, that uh the day would basically be the same. We would look for synchronous live teaching from eight till twelve, a break for lunch, and then an afternoon remote activity. So we would have more, we would have consistency between our uh in-person schedules and our our remote schedules because there were, it's highly likely that we'll have to flip back and forth between um remote and in-person. The flipping back and forth could be a state decision based on numbers of the virus. It could also be that if we have a certain number of students or staff, faculty members with positive tests, that we would need to close the school down for um fourteen days or ten days. And we would need to switch to remote learning during the um during the closure. So I think we have to prepare for um a strong remote learning program, even if we're planning on starting uh in-person. Again, I just wanted to stress that uh we are a one-to-one district and we'll be sending um iPads home with all students. We typically have done that at the, only at the high school level, but we're preparing to have all students take their iPads uh home. So we'll be prepared for remote learning, um if in fact that becomes a a reality. There was also a teacher idea that I wanted to share, it came from multiple teachers, is that even if we were to go to remote instruction or be directed to go into remote instruction by the state, uh many teachers um asked if they could deliver their remote instruction from their classrooms because that's where all their supplies and materials are. And they felt they could do a um a better job uh delivering um our remote lesson from their classrooms. So we would uh like to sort of support that and try to keep the buildings open, whether we are remote or um or in-person. Again, Bob, the next slide. Wanted to talk a minute about the opening calendar because we still have some outstanding calendar issues. And um there are also calendar issues being um discussed at the state level. So um again, we we haven't gotten a final uh decision by the commissioner as to um any changes he's proposing to the school calendar, but I think um in the next two or three weeks, there there may be changes. So um what we had discussed prior to the pandemic, well, first day for teachers. That's a Tuesday, that's typically a setup day. And again, that's the same day that we had prior to the pandemic, would be a first day for staff when the fiscal twenty-one sort of contract year starts for staff would be Tuesday, August twenty-fifth. In most years, then the Wednesday through Fa- Friday of that week, we have a uh a district-wide conference. And again, we're not going to bring all the teachers together. It doesn't make sense for us to gather everybody. So we're going to be changing um our our opening conference, and that's going to be building-based PD and preparation for teachers. I think classrooms are going to have to be redesigned. I think curriculum is going to need to be rethought. I think we have a lot of um professional development to do. And uh teachers were just really looking for um building-based time, and I think that's the safest time that we can um we can um provide for them. Then Monday, uh August thirty-first through Tuesday, September third, that following week, that's the week before Labor Day weekend. Friday is off by contract and Monday is Labor Day. That's why there's only four days that week. So we would have some person instruction for identified students. That means we would have certain students who would need, I think, a head start. We're going to have some students who are going to be really anxious. There's going to be adults in masks, kids in masks. We thought we could bring in identified populations of students gradually, so have some students in the buildings. And then we would have um remote teacher and class instruction, so teachers would be connecting with their classes uh that week. And again, almost thinking of it like a parent conference ahead of the start of school because the, one of the challenges here is when we shut down in March, when we closed the buildings in March, teachers already had established relationships with their students and families. We're going to be starting a year where um teachers, again, may know students, but they don't have those same relationships. So we want really that um initial connection to happen during that week. And for teachers, again, um to to spend some time, but also they're going to need, again, additional preparation time. I can't stress that enough, that uh how students flow through the buildings, how we're um, how we're organizing drop-off and pickup, looking at how we're um monitoring students using bathrooms. We actually have to build in um time for students to wash their hands. All of those things are going to need to be um worked out and discussed with faculty. um time for students to wash their hands. All of those things are going to need to be um worked out and discussed with faculty um as we move forward. We will certainly plan all of that, but I think we need to practice executing that uh during uh during that week. Also, um, we haven't gotten the official transportation guidelines yet. But from what I'm hearing, um, they're gonna limit the number of kids on buses potentially. Um, and having a signed seat for students for contact tracing. So for some of our younger students, we may run the buses that week and then have parents um maybe take their um child uh onto a bus, show them an assigned seat. We might want to group um students from the same family together. So I think we have some um uh coordinating and planning to do where we can't just have the buses drive up as normal and have the kids just um pile in. It's going to be uh a much more structured than that, and we may need to practice uh that week. And then finally, on Tuesday, September eighth, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, would be the uh first day for um all students. So that would really give us um um eight, what I think are really critical days for us to have some students in early. Um, have some uh teachers preparing their classrooms and getting professional development. Uh, have the buses uh potentially running and having the students uh being assigned seats and doing some of that practice. And then um again, most of our or many of our routines in the schools are going to need to be um changed. And then just doing some training. And there's also, um, the state is recommending a a significant amount of training for teachers. Um, recognizing COVID symptoms and um learning the protocols as to what to do if they if they experience those symptoms either in themselves or with their students. So I again, I just can't stress that um I think we need to um, we need some time at the start of the year. Um, Bob, the next um slide, please. So the next steps, again, we completed our feasibility study. We took basically square footage mess measurements of our classes. Um, we looked at what was even possible in the three plans that were required to submit. Um, we've had meetings with teachers and principals to um to say, okay, what would be a realistic day given um given some of the guidelines that we've seen. Uh, how could we do this in a way that works, that prioritizes in-person instruction? Um, and then um we're starting to get feedback from parents on those uh particular plans, again, through school councils, PTOs. We're gonna do a parent forum on Thursday, and we understand we need to continue to get more and more feedback. It's not going to be limited to that. And then um again, our plan is to submit our planning models to DESI. Again, we we have to submit three. We don't have to choose which one, but we have to submit three on July thirty-first. The state is actually asking us not to choose the plan that we want um until after August tenth. So I know there are districts that have made that decision already. Um, I respect their dis- their their timing on that, but I do think um again, the state's being very clear. I think I shared a a memo with the committee from the commissioner asking districts not to make that choice before August tenth. And I think the reasoning is um they want to get a final um more up-to-date um counts on the virus. And um and again, they they may chick, they may pick the option in saying um we have to start remotely um in the fall. So um I think any decision we make prior to the middle of August. Um, again, we can certainly state our position if if people decide they want to do that. But um the state's asking us not to make a final decision until until mid-August. But because we have these plans forming, um, we have a lot of uh teacher and parent questions that are emerging. There's a lot of overlap in these questions, so really feel it's time now for a district working group to assist in answering a lot of the common questions. And then helping with uh communication on the school bl- school-based plans. So again, Bob, the next slide. I'm almost done, I promise. So we want to put together a distant district working group. Again, we're from the assistant sys- superintendent. Um, we need director of finance. Um, we need um some building administrators. Um, we certainly need teachers. We need some special education administrator. Mary has to be a part of this. We want to get someone from the Board of Health, um probably Susan Luminello. We need Barbara Conley. We want one school nurse. Um, you can see we want sort of a very diverse um uh group of people. Um, and we certainly want parents to serve on this. I have three. We could certainly expand that a little bit. We just want representation from the from the different levels. Um, and again, we're going to be seeking other input, so this isn't going to be the only place. But I think when we're um answering, um, starting to answer some of the common questions. Um, that um that will will have a a diverse perspective of of um of people um working together and um trying to commute, uh communicate uh effectively throughout. Again, our plan is to have this group sort of identified and charged and starting to meet uh next week. So we have a lot of work to do um prior to the end of this week. Bob, could you go to the next slide, please? So again, if you're interested, I just want to make sure that uh I know we have lots of people on the call. That if you could send an email, you're also welcome to send one to me personally. But we have the uh twenty-twenty school opening um email account that we've been getting in questions from. And um if you could send that there, just identify um if you have children in the system and um what their grade levels are. And again, we're going to, we'll try to identify as many people as possible. And we're trying to look for um people across as many as we um um as we as we can, and then really ask parents to help us with um um their perspective. Again, answer common questions and then um work to help communicate. Bob, I just have a couple more slides. I just honestly want to go through very quickly. Who's in informing our conversations? I think um I'll be the first to admit, I don't have a an epidemiological background. Um, I'm dependent on um other information that I'm getting from from other experts. We're trying to apply that information to learning environments, which I do know about. So um the hard part about this, if anyone is going to question me on whether we should do three feet or six feet. I I am going to say I I I can only respond to the advice that I'm being provided. Um, I'm sure there are strong positions and people with more expertise uh out there um on these particular areas. But I am relying on uh the Mass Department of Public Health through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We are using their guidelines that they are um that they're providing. We're also looking at regional school district and school-level conversations. What I mean by that is we're talking constantly with um with superintendents in my area uh in the Middlesex League. I know that principals are speaking with their colleagues. Um, we are trying to uh problem solve together. I think one of our frustrations is that the state is approaching this. If there are three hundred and fifty-one school districts, it's almost like we're we're solving these problems or answering questions three hundred and fifty-one times. Um, and so um uh that's kind of a challenge. All of our school buildings are slightly different. But many of us have enough commonalities where um I think regional plans would have been would have been feasible, but it's it's just been a real challenge to do that. Um, we have certainly a nurse leader, Barbara, who we've been communicating with regularly. And I can't stress enough, the Burlington Board of Health, Susan Luminello, has been a great resource to the school district. And uh she continues to be. Uh, she's getting tired of my uh cellphone calls, but she's been very helpful, so I wanted to make sure I thank that. Um, thanked Susan and the Board of Health. The Parabola Project is uh something that also has been very helpful. The Mass Association of School Superintendents um is working with. Bob, the next slide, because people are going to ask what the Parabola Project is. Um, the Parabola Project is a uh partnership between Ariadne Labs and the Learning Accelerator. Um, and we got some grant funding, and this is going to be a resource that's open to um all school districts and all superintendents. Um, I've been on a small working group that's been working with uh the Parabola Project with Ariadne Labs and the Learning Accelerator. And um I'll share some of the documentation, but um everything is going to be open access beginning July twenty-fourth, which I think is going to be a huge resource to uh people like me, to districts and to communities. If you don't know, Ariadne Labs is a partnership between Brigham and Women's and the Harvard uh School of Public Health. Um, they've helped uh other countries open their schools. They do work in many different states. Because some of what was missing for us again is I don't have a research staff. Um, so for us to research what other folks are doing, um it just takes a tremendous amount of time. And this group with the Learning Accelerator uh again is uh an educational group. Um, have done a lot of the background and and research for us. So um I just wanted to share share one example from their planning tool, which again um has been developed. We got uh I think the final version about three hours ago, and it's going to be accessed to the public on July twenty-fourth. So Bob, could you just um? Okay, so um they have different categories, so I just wanted to share. One category was would be to de-densify hallways and bathrooms. Okay, that would be sort of on there um on the a checklist for districts to work through. Um, and so they would have the next slide, Bob, and it's going to be hard to read um and capture on PowerPoint. But basically, um, they want, um, they would say this is a school-level implementation. They want to, they want um schools and uh school-based teams to look at whether this is a priority, high, medium or low. Um, they they identify what to consider. Um, what I also like is they look at um tools that have been developed across the country. They look at um, they um also identify um other states that have provided this or other countries that have been providing this information. So it's sort of a one-stop shop for us to do um a lot of um uh make sure that we're we're not just looking in Burlington for the answers, but we're looking um across the country and actually globally for some of the work that we're we're doing. So again, I just gave you one example on de-densifying hallways. Um, they have um, they have different categories um from leadership all the way through transportation. And um I think it's going to be a very important um document for us to use. And again, I've just appreciated um having um questions answered by this. And again, this group is stressing uh a combination of safety features. Uh, it's not just about social distancing. Uh, it's also about wearing masks. It's also about um um uh managing the density of how kids travel around the school. It's making sure that we have regular hand washing in. It's going to be a combination of a bunch of factors that are going to keep people safe. So again, Madam Chair, I'm sorry I talked so long. I know there are some people who have some questions. Um, we'll be repeating some of this content on Thursday, but we're going to be trying to add content. Um, I know we also have some principals who are on the call, so if there are some specific questions um that we can um help clarify, we will try to, we will try to do that as well for the for the committee and and other folks who have questions. Bob, I think that was my last slide. It was.
Okay, thank you, Eric. That's um well done. I would like to open the um forum to the committee for questions, uh comments. Bon, do you want to go first?
I I did you, I'm sorry, did you say me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I I just think uh I want to thank Dr. Conti and all the teachers and all the principals and all the other staff that have been working on these incredibly complex attempts at solutions to a situation which has conflicting needs. Um, clearly, there are conflicting needs for different situations that different students or families or teachers find themselves in. Um, but I am uh very appreciative of how far you've gotten and being able to even figure out. And by, you know, using others, people that you know is helpful is always a good thing. Um, and putting it all together, um, I'm not sure you uh, I just wanted to add that it, I know before this district working group, you we've also had working groups at each building. We've had the principals and teachers and nurses and counselors all working on this plan as well. And so I I think you've been thorough and included all those voices and are looking going forward to including uh all those voices in different ways and trying to figure out how we can move forward with these conflicting requirements and needs of different stakeholders. So I wanted to thank you, Dr. Conti, and everyone who's put these together. Thank you.
Okay, Carl.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, Dr. Conti and your staff for um a thorough presentation. I know that was an incredible amount of work and that that work is just beginning. Um, I just had one question about the feasibility study um in relation to the parent survey where about roughly seventeen percent of parents identif- uh chose full remote as their option. At this point, I know that's subject to change. Um, and when you did the study, I did some math, and it's not my strongest suit, but it's a little bit over six hundred students. Um, would that affect the distance that we are able to achieve? If if all of those students chose remote, would it be able to um increase the distance or was that already taken into consideration?
Um, Mr. Foss, I I think that um fewer students would allow more social distancing. Um, but we, at this time, didn't um ask for the um individual students to identify themselves. So I'm not exactly sure if they're all elementary, all middle or all high. Um, and so um again, the early surveys were just a part of the feasibility study, and that was kind of requirement from the state. I think as the plans come together, we're going to have to survey families. Um, again, I think if they have a better idea of what's being proposed, I think they'll be more confident in their answer. And then if they still want to choose uh full remote, um, I think then um we'll have to follow up and ask them to um identify themselves. We're still responsible for their child's education, and we're still responsible for sort of keeping track um of those children. So um I I think we, again, that that was really only our first attempt, but I think your um your thought on math is, again, the if we if we have fewer students attending, we will have um we will have more opportunity for um larger social distancing.
Thank you.
Uh, Catherine, any input?
Um, I I had a question on one of the slides that went up, and again, it it's probably inflexed. But I had noticed that social studies and science were one hundred percent always in the afternoon and remote. That's the way it looked on the slide. Is that going to be rotated around so that social studies and science are live on certain days too? Um, later in the week or following week, because to me, it seems that science and social studies, we get the short end of the stick in a sense that I think science a lot is hands-on, and um I just want to see if that, if I understood that correctly.
Uh, Ms. Bon, you did understand that correctly in sort of the present model. The social studies and science were the at the elementary level were the after-lunch remote uh activity. I think some um early reaction to that would be, um, I think we were developing um what I think what some teachers felt were really engaging um activities that uh would would hold the students' attention remotely. Um, but we could certainly have um, we could have that discussion and talk about that uh with the principals. It's just much harder, especially with early elementary, to teach uh literacy and numeracy remotely. So um so I again, I I think that was the uh initial plan. But uh I think one of the reasons we're going to be getting feedback is just for comments like that, and we can we can make sure that feedback is shared and um uh maybe make some adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Catherine?
Um, well, again, I I think since we don't have all the plans in place, but I think it's something Carl was talking about. You know, if we have a large percent of uh students that don't want to come back and want to be one hundred percent remote. Then, you know, how do we divide that up as far as, you know, which teachers are doing what? Um, so I I I'm sure you have some sort of an idea how that will uh be moved forward. That's kind of the question I have, is who's home, who's not? Is that, you know, something that you all are considering?
Um, again, we we are thinking about it, and I think obviously matching um uh potential um teachers who um are not returning with remote instruction makes sense. I I would say in speaking with some teachers, I think um a full remote schedule and a in sort of a a full in-person schedule will be um um i- is almost two full-time jobs. So we would really need to um sort of look at uh who's doing what. And um i- it's not as simple as sometimes people um stayed even across in in elementary uh curriculum. Um, um, you know, if uh a fifth-grade teacher and a first-grade teacher don't necessarily, I mean, they have potentially different skill sets. There are significantly different curricul- There's significantly different curriculum. So we would need to problem solve that. But I think the better job that we do communicating and planning a safe in-person situation that I'm hoping will have more and more people want to have a, an, an in-person experience. Because I think nothing can match the in-person experience. And I think that's one of our guiding principles. And I think that's, I think that's clearly something that every parent who's spoken to me has, has, has commented on. Again, we have very talented teachers. We want our students in front of those teachers.
Agreed, thank you.
Tom?
Just a general comment. I mean, I just, listening to this and reading to all, reading all the documents that have been coming over to us over the past few weeks, you just get a sense as to how deep and how wide this problem is. And, and we have a very relatively short window of time to try to, to address it. Then you look at the, the results of the various surveys that went out. And it would be nice if it was 90%, 10% in favor of one certain solution, but it's kind of spread around. So, I mean, I, I commend you for what you're doing and what the whole staff and the, and the administration is doing because it's, 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 it's an, it's an impossible job to, to get something in place in the next six weeks that's going to make a majority of the people happy and will do everything that we'd like to do as far as delivering education to children. It's just, it's just a scary situation and a, and a hurdle that's, it's almost impossible to get over. So I, I commend you and, and Patrick and everybody over there that's working on this, what you've done, and I know you're going to keep working on it. And, and all we can do is the best we can do. One thing I did notice, and this is a small pebble in the ocean, but it just occurred to me when you said we're starting classes on the Tuesday, the eighth, on the, on the hybrid models where somebody's, one group is Monday, Tuesday, and the other group is Thursday, Friday. The Monday, Tuesday group, we have a lot of Monday holidays. So I don't know if you're going to be flipping those groups as time goes on or whatever, but it's something to keep in mind.
That, that was, Mr. Murphy, that was a conversation today at the high school instructional leaders meeting. So all the department heads were talking about potentially flipping AABB and then do BBAA. So they were, they were looking at the holidays and, and trying to maximize the in-person classes. So again, that's a great point and people are, are working on that. And then again, even trying to coordinate the, a common, a common day for, for cleaning. So again, we're saying we're choosing Wednesday afternoons. Just because it's middle of the week, it allows us to do a cleaning before different groups of students come in. But if there's a better day for families, we sort of want to, we want to hear that. And then there's lots of conversations we have to do with all members of our staff to, again, it's just a, a change in, in all of our expectations and, and sort of what's happening. So I, I have no delusions that we're going to satisfy 100% of our, of our families. We're just trying to provide, again, as, as the best and the largest amount of in-person instruction that we can safely provide for both students and staff. And I know there's going to be other childcare issues. I have a, a meeting with Donna Sullivan in the before and after school group tomorrow. We've been debriefing about her summer experience and we may be able to provide some limited after-school care depending on what's available. It would need to be school-specific because we don't want kids moving around to different schools. But we're hoping to include that in a future presentation or talk about that with the district planning team as well is, is, what can we provide in terms of longer day coverage for families that need that?
Anything else, Tom?
No, thank you.
So Eric, I think that was an excellent presentation. I think that the problem is absolutely huge. And I don't know that there's a simple answer, but I think you've made Herculean effort to try and come up with a format that could work. I, I really hope that people take seriously the, the three items that are going to protect us from a resurgence of the virus. And that's hand washing, wearing masks, and social distancing. I'd hate to see us open and then have to close and then open and have to close. I'm, I'm hopeful that instead of that scenario, that we will keep the numbers down and go from a model such as what you just presented to gradually back to our regular, what we're used to, full-time model. I want to make sure that the door is always left open to go back to the regular full-time model as things get better, as treatments are found and a vaccine is developed, et cetera. I don't want to be locked into one of these sort of part-time school models. If at any point we can go back, I hope that we can just go back. But aside from all that, I, I think you did a great job in coming up with, whoever, all of you who worked on it did a great job. As, as far as the science and social studies that Catherine mentioned, as much as my being a science freak, I, I think that for the younger kids, the reading and math are probably the things we need to concentrate on. But I don't think, or am I wrong? Would the, would science and social studies sort of relegated to the back burner in the middle and high school or just at the elementary level?
I would disagree with your classifying them as relegated to the back burner. But if you're asking, were they provided in a, in a remote, in a remote fashion at the elementary level? I would say yes. We were not talking about doing that at the middle school and, and the, in the high school. Again, the middle school schedule, the specifics are, are coming together. The interesting thing about the middle school is just its structure by nature. Having sort of nine separate teams helps students stay within that team, which I think is a, is a good thing. So I think they're, they're working on some of that. And then I think the high school is going to run more of a traditional, more of a traditional schedule. I think the students can regulate themselves a little bit more. So I think there's going to be remote components, obviously, to the high school day because it's a hybrid model. But we weren't going to relegate any particular class to, to fully remote or in-person. I think it's going to be a combination of both. And again, we're still waiting on guidance, I'm sorry, about specialist classes. So PE, chorus, band, I know those courses are very important to students. And I know even athletics are very important to students. But we're, all that stuff is evolving as we, as we move forward.
Okay, I'm sorry you didn't like my choice of language, but I think some of the parents feel that the remote learning in the spring wasn't super great. And as a result, I, I think I used the relegate to the back burner term based on the complaints I've received with remote learning.
So, Madam Chair, again, please not to interrupt. I just wanted to stress one more, more time that some of our thinking in the feasibility study and some of the, again, initial structures from principals and teachers were to have a remote schedule and an in-person schedule sort of match. So, so if, if you looked again at the elementary day where you had a literacy block, a math block, and a special in-person, then if that were to be remote, then we would still have a, a literacy block, a math block, and in-person with, again, with a, with a teacher providing that instruction synchronously. So the, the days would look, we were looking for some flexibility because we were being warned, I guess, is the, is the right word. To be able to flip between in-person and remote fairly seamlessly. And I think that's part of our, part of our challenge.
Okay, I have one other question. Watching the questions streaming live on Facebook, are kids going, is your plan that you presented, the, the framework of it tonight, is that for students at every level to go home before lunch?
No, that would be pre-K, elementary, and middle. The high school students, Mark still hasn't figured out a lunch schedule or how to feed the kids. But we couldn't feed them in the cafeteria, but we'd have to spread them out. But I think, Mark, the high school schedule has the students remaining for lunch.
All right, thanks. Is there any, Martha, go ahead.
I also, I, I realized I did want to add just a comment. There isn't a lot in the plans and schedules that we've seen so far. And I understand they're completely drafts about the arts and the music and the phys ed and that, those kind of areas. There's not a lot about it, but I understand there's a lot of figuring out to be done. But I want to be sure we don't lose all of that because we also want to be sure there's opportunities. In addition to, we don't want kids to lose out on learning academics. We also want kids to have joy and fun and think of school as a place they like and want to be. Someday, it'll be open full-time again. And want to try to keep those specials, for a better word, and the arts involved. So I, I know it is in your mind, but I wanted to comment because it just is so important to our kids, keeping the joy in, in school.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the committee that wishes to comment? Ways and Means, Mr. Riley, do you have anything?
No, nothing right now.
All right, now I'll go back to the list of people who put their names down to comment. And Diana, you were number one.
All right, um, am I coming through okay?
Yes.
These are different, okay. Just a couple of things. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. The first one is whatever we called what we did in the spring, it really wasn't remote learning. It was crisis management. I think it's reasonable to expect anything that we do online or in person, when we go back to school, whether it's in the school building or out, to look very differently. I don't think we should expect it to look the same. I certainly know that what I was charged with to do over the spring is not at all what I would be doing during the, when we, you know, start again in the fall, no matter how we do it. Because at least now, hopefully, we have time to plan and we have an opportunity to really focus on teaching rather than worrying about whether our students are, you know, available. I had a question regarding the seating plans that I saw for elementary. I recognize they're not our schools. But the thought of an elementary student sitting for four, is, is the intent that students are going to sit at their desks for four hours? I think it would be tough at the middle school. I don't even know how you do that with kids at the elementary and continue to have engaging instruction. So is there any movement break in there? How, how will those be handled? You know, is the assumption everyone's going to sit for four hours staring face forward, not being able to look at each other?
Through the chair, Diana, that's not the expectation. I think that's why elementary staff and principals were really, I think, it was really important to them to, to a specialist placeholder, a block, a specialist placeholder in the schedule, I'm sorry, I've been talking so much.
Right, so that they've got some transition to specialist or something.
Yes, and then I think the teachers are all pretty good at managing the, the movement. I think the one thing that I've gotten, again, some almost angry feedback with, with some of the elementary teachers is right now, the guidance is not to have students sing. And I think a lot of our elementary teachers use singing as a, as a really effective teaching tool. And so I, I think that's one of their frustrations, but I'm sure, I'm sure they'll figure it out. Again, no one expects the students to sit in one direction for four hours straight. I do think someone has mentioned outdoor teaching. I think we're going to try to do that as much as we can. But I think there's a limit to that as well, depending on weather and shade and, and other things that we have. But I think, again, no expectation of sitting still for four hours.
To the chair, I also just have some process questions and concerns. The, the first one has to do with the district working group. I, I was referring to it as the steering committee. There are four teachers on that, according to the list that I was, that we, we showed on the screen. Who is determining who those four teachers will be?
Eric, who will determine that?
I was going to have principals ask for volunteers. I've already gotten some emails from teachers because we sent that out, Diana, to all staff. So I, again, I have a list and the numbers were just, again, a rough guideline. I can't have 150 people on the committee, but we'll try to have some representation from, from different levels. We've asked for some particular roles. I think we've asked for a, a social worker or a counselor. We've asked for a nurse in particular. So I think we have teachers, but we also are looking for other educators who represent other very specific roles and responsibilities. If you have a suggestion, I'll certainly listen to a suggestion.
Okay, so a couple of concerns there. One is that, that means that you're going to have teachers there that are not necessarily tasked by their peers to represent them. One way to have, and I'm very concerned that unlike many of the, of the surrounding districts, the teachers' union has been left off of that steering committee. That would be a way to, in addition to having folks from every building, have 415 teachers at the, at the, at the table. I think it would also make it a lot easier when we're trying to work out other things if, in fact, we were to follow what some of our very successful other folks, you know, other districts are doing, which is working collaboratively. So I am concerned about that. And I was also asked to bring up a concern that some of the meetings, some of the school-based meetings on planning have been taking place. The expectation is that teachers are in the schools to have some of those meetings in some buildings. And I'm receiving concerns from folks that perhaps the safety protocols are not being followed in those meetings. Teachers are being asked to pair up in close proximity to each other. Again, this is what's been, you know, reported to me. And mask protocols aren't necessarily being followed strictly. So I'm just concerned we might find ourselves with a problem before we even get to the part where we talk about bringing the students in. So, and, and I, I'm going to push, you know, I think the one thing that I have heard that people are most concerned about was Jesse's decision to make the guideline three feet instead of six feet. And so I, I am bringing the, the request of the BEA to please, please, whenever possible, have at least six feet of distance. There's too much we don't know about this disease. When those rules were, those guidelines were released, they weren't even talking about aerosolization from speaking. You know, they were only talking about that from intimidation. So I think it's really important that, for the safety of everyone involved, that we need to have maximum distance.
Diana, I'd like to comment on your points. One is, I hope that when these meetings occur, that the mask protocols are followed because it's important. And I would ask the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to make sure that the mask protocols are followed because those are the things that will keep our numbers down and keep us safe enough to go back to school. As far as the distance, I, I think that while we are trying not to go to the minimum, which is three feet with masks, I think that it would be perfectly acceptable for teachers in their classrooms to separate the kids as much as they possibly can. I don't know that we can get to six feet. I think it's somewhere in between that we need to compromise on. But, you know, if there are two kids that aren't there for the day and you can spread the desks out further, that's great. But I don't think anyone is really trying to go all the way to the minimum. We do need to take the guidelines that we're given and we need to take the, the information from the American Academy of Pediatrics. And we need to look at them all closely and do the very best that we can. And I think that working together, that's what we're going to do, the best that we can with as much distance as we can possibly fit, depending on the classroom. Is anyone else, Diana, do you have anything else?
No, just, you know, in terms of that meeting, I think that it was very uncomfortable for. Uh, no, just, you know, in terms of that meeting, um, I think that it was very uncomfortable for, for folks to try and police each other to, you know, and so it's going to be really important that, that, um, expectations of the building are there. Um, and, uh, we can't play fast and loose with those rules. I know that myself, you know, after a few hours in a mask, it's not very comfortable, especially if there isn't air conditioning. But, um, I, I'm worried about that being a sort of a, a sign of difficulties we may have later. And so I just want to make sure we're keeping that, um, in mind, so.
Well, I, I understand. I've, I've been in the building a couple of times and I noticed not everyone is wearing masks on occasion. Um, and so I would like to ask that the mask protocol really be followed more closely. Not only because it's a good thing to do, but because, um, I just think, you know, even in the community, if people follow the rules, our chances of keeping the numbers down are a whole lot better than they are if we don't follow the rules. So I understand that particular point.
And I'll, I'll finish off with just a reminder, we'd really like to have some representation on that, um, on that district planning committee. I think it's very important. And it's not as though that's unreasonable. In my personal opinion, we're seeing it being very successful in many other districts. And because of that, they're having far fewer problems coming to agreements on, um, how things should work.
All right, Dr. Conti.
Again, Madam Chair, that's, that's fine. Um, we'll, I'll, I'll work on that.
Okay, thanks Diana. The next person asked to be taken off the list, so that's fine. Let me get back to my list of names. Everybody keeps typing and it bumps me to the bottom and I'm losing my list. Uh, Michelle Smith.
Hello, I'm Michelle Smith. I'm the mom of two kids at Fox Hill. I do have several questions. Would you prefer that I ask them one at a time or all at once?
Uh, why don't you just, um, I don't know, just do whatever you want.
Okay, um, from my reading of the DESI guidelines, kindergarteners and first graders will not be required to wear masks. And has that been taken into account while planning out the spacing for those classrooms?
Yeah, why don't you stop and, well, yeah, well, Dr. Conti, you want to answer that?
Um, that's one area where the, um, the parabola group that I'm working with differs with the state. And they're encouraging, um, all students to wear masks and all staff to wear masks at, at any age. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay, next question.
Okay, what is the status of the school HVAC systems and windows? And have there been air quality studies conducted in the buildings?
That's a question that comes up frequently and we've, we've talked about. So Bob, I might put you on a spot, on the spot a little bit. And, um, you know, we, I think we have some newer systems. We obviously have some older systems. Um, we've been talking about increasing the frequency of testing, especially at the start of the year, air quality. And then, um, we can talk about how often we change some filters. I think there may be a misunderstanding, um, in terms of, um, if we do have air conditioners, what the air conditions are doing. But Bob, I'll let you, um, try to do that in, in, uh, in three, three, or three minutes or under, so.
Okay. Well, I definitely want to say that yes, majority of our HVAC systems are older. Our two newest ones are at least nine years old. Uh, but with that being said, we have a mix of everything from boilers to, um, baseboard heating. Uh, so I think what we're looking to focus on is, is that our HVAC systems, while they may be old, um, have been maintained properly and our filters are changed regularly. Uh, so with that being said, um, one of the things that we're focusing on not only is air quality testing, uh, on a consistent basis prior to the return of school and during, uh, you know, the first few weeks of school consistently, um, is that we'll also be changing filters more frequently as well. Um, so what we really want to focus on is, is the clean air being circulated in the buildings. Uh, but that also means running our HVAC systems and opening windows to make sure that we have that clean air in the buildings. So I think I'll stop at there and let Dr. Conti take over for a sec.
Bob, could you, um, I, could you just go on a little bit about, are you spending some time making sure that the windows are functional in the buildings?
Um, so yes, I will go with that, Miss, Mrs. Chair. And, um, so our maintenance crew is looking at that. We regularly look at our windows. Uh, we do have a health test system. So if someone is aware of an issue of a classroom that does have a non-function window, um, we would love to know of that. Um, as recently as in the past two weeks, we've had the glass company in working on repairing, um, windows in some of our, our buildings. So again, please let us know about that, but that is something that we are taking seriously. Additionally, we're looking at any classroom spaces that do not have windows in them. Um, and either looking to, um, reallocate or move those, um, staff and/or students to different places in the building that do have windows. So we are looking at that and taking that seriously.
And Bob, just, just for a concrete answer, even prior to the pandemic, the filters on the classroom units were changed twice a year. Is that correct?
Yeah, so again, we felt, we changed those filters. We have univents in a majority of our buildings and that is predominantly for heat. Um, again, most of our buildings that have AC have different systems on them. Um, so those univents are changed twice a year. And that is at the beginning, in the middle of the heating system. And again, the heating system is in only half a year. Buildings and that is predominantly for heat.
We asked a question.
Somebody has there. We have different systems on them. Um, so those univents are changed.
Hang on, Catherine.
And that is at the beginning, in the middle of the heating system. And again, the heating system.
Somebody's, um, mic is on. All right, Catherine, you wanted to ask something?
Yeah, so the air that's being pulled in from the systems, is it air, is it pulling in fresh air from outside or recirculating air that's already inside? And again, I know if windows are open, that helps out with that. But from all of the research that I've seen in terms of, you know, like ground zero person who spread a virus in a restaurant or on a bus, it was because it was recirculating the same air inside that space. Whereas people who were farther away or, um, were in contact with that ground zero person at whatever the event was, didn't necessarily get it. It was the fact that the air was being recirculated. So I just want to see if we've looked into that as well.
Uh, again, yeah, I'll greatly address that. So, um, this is a conversation that we've had a lot lately. Uh, and in particular, if you look at most of our air conditioning systems, and I'll address heating in a second, most of our air conditioning systems, um, are internal. And really all they're doing is blowing cold air in the rooms. Um, our heating systems, which use the univents, that's where they're actually pulling cold air or clean air from outside, pushing those through the filters and circulating. The high school, even though it's an older system, and I know we talked about that a lot, has the large, um, air handling units up on the roof. Um, so most of the time when we're running air conditioning and all the time when we're running heat, it is pulling in clean air from outside and pushing that through filters through our vents in the system. So again, uh, to answer your question, yes, uh, most of the time, we are pulling fresh air from outside in when the systems are running. When the systems are not running, of course, or when we're running, um, air conditioning is when we're predominantly just circulating air within the room and not bringing new air in unless we have the windows open.
Right, because the windows being open, I think, is key, if you're recirculating. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Michelle Smith, do you have more questions?
Uh, yes, I have three more, if, um, Madam Chair will allow.
Sure, go ahead.
My next one is, will teachers be provided with the tech resources necessary for online instruction? So, meaning up-to-date laptops that are capable of editing video? And that would work well with Google Meet, which is what the district has been using for conducting, um, synchronous remote learning.
Ms. Smith, I'm going to say yes, but Bob, could you just do a little bit more specific? Or Patrick, um, aren't we doing, uh, we, we are on a three-year rotation with, with teacher devices, isn't that correct?
Uh, that, that is correct. We're on a three-year rotation. Uh, this year we're looking at two schools, uh, but we're trying to actually purchase more than that. So while I don't want to overpromise, um, it is something that we're looking to do during the summer, um, to provide additional resources to, um, additional schools that have some of the older devices. Uh, but typically, yes, you'll see a three-year rotation on almost all of our devices across the district. So on the fourth year, you would get a new one.
So I guess, Ms. Smith, I'm, I'm not sure, you asked a very specific question about video something. I, I, I don't, I don't know that, but I, what I will say is, um, our teachers, um, again, we, we try to put, uh, the newest devices in our teachers' hands, so, um, no one should be working with a device that's over three years old.
Okay, I could move on, um, to the next one.
Yeah, go ahead. Next question.
The DESI guidelines, um, refer to having a COVID isolation space in each school for children or staff members who are exhibiting symptoms. And how has that been accounted for in the space guidelines that you've set up for your schools?
Again, through the chair, we've identified with Barbara Conley and the principals. Barbara Conley is our nurse leader, um, a, in isolation space, uh, in every school. They do make suggestions about having it have a separate, um, exit. We, we can't accomplish that in every school, but we try to have it near an exit. Um, I think, um, we just got the, um, the health protocols on Friday. Um, Barbara is going through those. Um, she'd actually like us to have, um, a higher standard in some cases and that's going to be part of our communication to, to parents. So, um, one example of a higher standard would be, I think the state is saying, um, parents need to take their child's temperature before coming to school. I think they don't want children that have, I think, 100.4, um, temperature or higher. Um, I think the district policy has always been 100. So that might be something where we have a higher standard than, um, than the state. Um, but we, we need to put all that together and, uh, get it to you. But we are planning on having an isolation space in, um, in every school, um, as required. And then managing that space, I think, is, is, is going to be a challenge. But I think we will, um, um, we, we need training to do that. And Barbara is going to prepare us for that.
Okay, Michelle.
All right, uh, my final question is about the surveys that are being sent out. And I was wondering what your level of confidence is that they're representative of the community? Um, and to elaborate on that a little bit, what is the response rate that you're getting from, as compared to the whole um, totality of the students in the system? And are the surveys being offered in any languages aside from English?
Um, yes, to your last question, we're, we're translating everything, um, uh, to our predominant languages. We, we, I'm sure we don't translate it to all 50 that we have, but we're doing, um, um, our more predominant languages. Um, the rely, the, the, the initial surveys, um, um, were more part of a feasibility study. I think they were just a generalization. Um, I think we got our first answer to the survey within 15 seconds of posting it. So I think there are people who are very, uh, engaged in some of the processes. Um, I think we had, uh, over 1,500 responses, which for us, for any survey, would be significant. But, um, again, I think as the plans come together, um, uh, with more detail, I think as we ask parents to identify, um, more specifically, the decisions they want to make about their individual children, um, I think, uh, we'll get, uh, a greater response rate and more accurate information, uh, moving forward. Again, the initial surveys were honestly about, um, we need to include survey information with our draft feasible, with our feasibility, uh, plans to the state. They were asking us to do that. So I had a whole lot of faith in the, sort of in the precision of this, of the instruments. I think we need to do, uh, future instruments, um, that are more precise and connected to, um, more defined plans.
Um, Michelle, is that?
Yes.
That, you all said?
Thank you so much for all of your thoughtful answers and all of the work that you're putting into solving what are some, or just some incredibly difficult problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we go on to the next person, um, there's someone who, who can't ask the question herself. And she wants to know if the, um, air quality testing will be reported so that we can know whenever you do it, how we're doing with air quality.
Um, sure, Mrs. Monica, we can, we'll share that with the committee. We can share it publicly. I don't know exactly how to read, uh, those reports. Like, I'll try to learn how to do that and we, we can maybe do some sort of translation, so. Um, um, but yes, we've, it's, it's not about keeping that information secret, obviously. So we will, um, we'll, we'll try to get it out.
Okay, that's great. Mike Souza, you're next on my list.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, Mike Souza here. I am a parent of three kids in elementary school at Fox Hill. Um, first of all, Dr. Conti, thank you for everything you and your team are doing. I think if there were ever a, I don't want to deal with this in my career section of a, an application, this probably tops that.
Yep.
Thank you for, again, everything that, that you're all doing in preparation. Um, I heard someone refer to what happened in the, in the spring as crisis management rather than remote learning. I will say, as a parent of three little kids, crisis management is probably, um, a nice way of putting it. So we'll start there. Um, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that plan for remote. So I've heard a lot about devices, iPads, which is a great thing. Um, I've heard a lot about curriculum. And I did see you mention structure and consistency, but I'd really like to understand what that means. Um, so we'll start there, but also kind of in tandem with that, when we talk about afternoons, students being home at the elementary level, will that be instructor-led? I think there's a strong likelihood at some point we will end up remote, at least for half of the day. Um, and having to parent the afternoon schooling of three elementary students while two parents work full-time is really not an option. So I'd like to kind of understand if that would be instructor-led driven or, um, student-driven, if you will.
Again, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask, uh, Patrick to, uh, jump in here if he'd like to as well. Mr. Souza, I, I think that it was clear from the feedback that we got, um, that parents were seeking, um, again, more consistency and more synchronous, more in-person, um, live teaching. Uh, live teaching is a bad term. More, um, um, more teacher-directed instruction, even if it were remote. Um, and I think what we are trying to do is, um, create a schedule where that would work. So, um, um, is the intention to have the, uh, remote activity led by teachers? The answer is yes. Um, that's the intention at the elementary level, which you were dis, you were discussing. Um, middle school and high school might be a little bit different. There might be some more, um, uh, independence, um, asked of the, of the learner. Um, and then I think, um, what we were sort of discussing early would be to have, uh, the remote day match the in-person day. So again, if we had a, um, a teacher leading a literacy lesson in her classroom in person and then we would go to remote, then that teacher would lead, the teacher's schedule really wouldn't change. She would just be leading that, uh, classroom lesson. Um, but the, but the delivery would be, would be remote. So I think we are trying to respond to the feedback of, again, much more consistency of schedule. Um, much more, um, um, direct interaction, um, with, uh, with the teacher and, uh, sort of more, more predictability. So, um, I think that's what we're trying to incorporate at the, uh, at the elementary level. Um, and the, um, um, you didn't ask it, but the, the lunch question, and I have elementary principals, um, at the meeting and they can answer that. We've been looking at different models and I'm not saying at some point we couldn't, uh, reincorporate lunch. But the schools that I've spoken to who are managing lunch, which is a sort of a risky event in our day, uh, some of them are taking three hours to do so. So they're starting lunch at 10:00 and they're ending lunch at 1:00. And it just seemed to be, uh, hugely intrusive to the learning process. So I think that was, that was some of our thinking, is to maximize teacher time. Um, and then, um, teachers need, um, a break in planning time. So, um, they would take that, uh, during the lunch period. They would come back, uh, teach the science of social studies lesson remotely and then the day would end at that point. So I wandered a little bit from your answer, but, um, again, the remote instruction, it would be markedly different than, uh, what you experienced in the spring.
No, that's, that's helpful, Dr. Conti. And, and Madam Chair, if I might, may a follow-up question to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so I think that's all great. I think the planning is great. I think it's extremely important. Um, I saw a comment in the chat and I would concur with this, where, where Diana Marcus said, "Teachers are struggling to run Google hangout meets with the entire classes." with the entire classes on Chromebooks, et cetera." So while I understand that having access to the applicable or correct technology is important, I think it's equally important to make sure everybody across the board knows how to leverage it and that we centralize the platforms that are being utilized. And that was one of the biggest pains I had. So while it would be certainly important to have my children instructor-led, it's also important that the instructor can coach the child on how to actually enjoy, enjoy, leverage, learn whatever, the technology itself. So the question really there becomes, realizing that remote is, one way or another, at some point going to become a thing again. Are the teachers right now being trained proactively on how to centralize the technology and how to execute in a way that it's going to be beneficial to both students and them?
Again, Mr. Souza, I think there are teachers who are seeking that professional development during the summer on their own. I think, I think what we were talking about is running some of those training sessions during that opening block of time that I, that I discussed. And I think that we do have teachers who are capable of training their colleagues and, and, and doing, and sort of using the, the remote tools. So again, we don't have a formal week of remote training planned as of yet. It may be something for us to consider. But we were going to provide some training during those, the, the days, the sort of the eight opening days that I discussed prior to the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Details question there. Will that also include continuity across the technology platforms? As I know, you know, I have two students who are in the same grade, and they were leveraging different technologies at different time. So I'd be interested in understanding if everybody can be on, even playing field, especially as we look school by school.
And again, I may need a little help with this one, but I'm thinking we're trying to stick to a common platform at elementary and then a common platform at secondary. So I, but we obviously need more work to do. So, Mr. Souza, I might have to get back to you on that a little bit. I agree with your point, and I think it's something that we discussed. But I want to make sure that we are executing what you asked.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that. And I'm happy that, Dr. Conti, if I can give you more feedback offline and you'd like it, I'm happy to do that.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, Becky Norm.
Hi, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mike's question around technologies and platforms actually are a great segue into my question. It's a common question for Dr. Conti. I'm a parent of three students, but with this question, I'm representing the CPAC Board. The CPAC recognizes what a challenge this time's been, and we wanted to especially thank you and Mary Hood for all of your support and attention to special needs students during this time. Mary especially has been very communicative with the CPAC and very open to hearing parent concerns, which is very important at a time like this. One of the guiding principles you listed is that student privacy will be considered in all applications used for remote learning. During the spring, which was a crisis management time, there were several incidents that we know of where parents, students, or staff accidentally shared private student work or feedback with a broader audience than intended. We attribute this to not all staff having been fully trained, let alone parents. And also, you know, a number of different privacy options and different software and technologies being used. All issues were taken seriously and were quickly resolved. But with this coming year, it's really important to be proactive around the issue of student privacy. So our question is, we'd like to confirm that in addition to the guiding principle, that the administration is proactively creating the appropriate protocols and training for staff, students, and parents in regards to privacy and risks using these different technologies during remote schooling. Thank you.
Eric. You're muted.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I missed the last part of the question. It broke up for me a little bit. So I know it was about student privacy. We did have some issues. I do think it's a training problem. We're aware of that. And I think we were going to, again, incorporate that into, into our early preparation and training prior to the start of the, of the school year. I just want to make sure I answered the question because I missed some of it, and I apologize for asking you to repeat it quickly.
No problem, Dr. Conti. In addition to staff training, I think we would like to request that parents and students also receive appropriate training on privacy inherent in different software, so they are not accidentally sharing information that is private.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, the staff resolved any issues brought up very quickly. It was very helpful. Just requesting, you know, as you're already doing proactive work with the staff, extending that to the rest of the community.
Yeah, I think we need to do more of that. And we have, having some parent training. And so I think I will certainly put the CPAC as supporting that. And I also think that we've discussed having a sort of a helpline that's live for parents till 8:00 at night. Because just, I think some people sometimes have a quick question. And instead of being frustrated, we, we were sort of, we're trying to think a little bit differently about some, some sort of customer service for families, especially in a, in a remote situation or even a hybrid situation. So it is something we're talking about, and I think we need to give you more information and more details on that.
Can I add one thing, please?
Oh, please, Patrick.
Yeah. No, I know we've talked about a lot of things all the way back from the initial parent responses at the end of the school year. And I just want to reiterate, and I know Diana mentioned in the chat that there's teachers working on the training. We do have a couple of our ITS teachers who are currently planning on some PD on specific platforms for teachers, starting August 1st. And I know that will continue. Teachers don't have to obviously take part in that because they're on summer vacation, but I know a lot will. But we'll also have some of those repeated, obviously, during those eight days. And we also committed in August to start running some parent tech sessions as well. That was one of the things that we had planned on doing. So those are great questions. And we'll probably be asking parents for more feedback on tools that they need repeats on. And the nice thing, what we're trying to do is not only run the sessions, but the two teachers in particular, who I'm thinking of at the elementary level, have agreed to videotape those sessions so that they can also have, parents can watch those. You know, if they can't view them live, they can go back and watch them. So we'll start to create a library as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Eileen Sickler.
Hear me?
Yes. You there, Eileen?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello?
We can hear you, Eileen.
Okay, I didn't know. All right, sorry. I've been secretary town meeting member, precinct four. Dr. Conti, thank you for all this work, and that PowerPoint was very helpful. Let's see, I didn't write it down, but there was in the survey, one of the surveys about the teachers looking forward or not looking forward to coming back. So what happens if a teacher says they don't want to come back? Like, what's the implication of that contractually, or I guess contractually first?
Again, I, every teacher I have spoken with wants to come back and be in front of their kids. I think there are some teachers or some employees who may have a pre-existing medical condition or something like that that may drive one of their, drive one of their decisions. I think the federal government has allowed for COVID-related leave, and there's a process that's associated with that. So I think that employee would go through, someone just said the COVID Care Act on the chat. So we would go through the process associated with the COVID, with the COVID Care Act, and again, try to protect our staff and make sure they're there. The implications of the, the non-return would depend on the teacher, the subject area. We may need some teachers to deliver remote instruction. Maybe we would look to that pool of teachers as a first group. I think we just need some specifics. I think as the plans come together, we'll hear more specifically from our employees. And then, again, we'll follow the, the new regulations in terms of protecting them, their job, their health. And then we'll, we'll sort of deal with that on a case-by-case basis.
And so have we talked with the substitutes who normally fill in to see if they're, you know, ready for this?
We have perm substitutes who are identified. We're certainly keeping them i- in our buildings, and I think they'll be, they'll be active. I think it's going to depend on every different scenario. And we were discussing some of those situations at the high school tonight. And some of them may be more of a challenge than others. If we have one section of calculus and one calculus teacher, and that teacher has a, either a false positive or has a potential exposure, it needs to be out for 14 days. We don't necessarily have a perm sub who could teach that content. Does that class shift to remote? If the teacher's really sick, we can't expect that teacher to be sick and to teach at the same time. So we have some unanswered questions and some problems in some scenarios that we're trying to think about. But Ms. Sickler, I don't have, I don't have an answer for you other than we're going to look at this on a case-by-case basis. And there are protections for the employees that will follow, and then we'll try to prepare for as many contingencies as we can.
Fair enough, thank you.
Lynn Gauthier, sorry, I missed you.
Hi, I'm a parent of three children at Fox Hill, kindergarten and second grade. And I'm also potentially classified as an essential worker, as well as my husband. So my question is, if the kids are coming home midway through the day and then getting the second part of the instruction remotely, what about families that have parents that are essential workers and can't be there to supervise the remote portion of the instruction? Because these young children aren't independent with it, and if they're, we're having to rely on daycare or something like that, how, how will the, the children be able to receive that portion of the instruction?
Ms. Gauthier, I think we're, we are having fully answered the question about essential workers. We do have to provide five-day-a-week instruction, and we were talking about that at the elementary school anyway. But we may need to provide extended opportunities for coverage for essential workers. So I don't have an answer for you yet, other than to say that we're, we know we need to look at that group of students separately and provide more coverage. There's also talk at the state level to identify teachers as essential workers. And if that happens, then that would change our, our planning as well. But thank you for your essential work. I want to make sure I say that. And I realize we have to add to our plans for the essential workers whose children we are teaching. And I just don't have an answer, a full answer for you yet today.
Do you have anything else you wanted to ask, Lynn?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. So there will be a, a meeting on, well, Eric and Patrick have a BCAT meeting. And anyone who wants to participate should do what, Eric? Want to explain that on Thursday night, for other questions that might come up?
Patrick, can I defer to you for that?
Sure. Much like tonight, we're going to try to stay on top of things and not get overly distracted by the chat. But there'll be opportunities for questions in the Facebook feed. And also, we plan on posting this presentation on the website and putting a link for folks to ask questions ahead of time. I think none of these questions that you've asked tonight are surprises, which is good. I'm sure we will get one at some point. But I, I think we just want to make sure that every question is getting answered as they come in. Well, our plan, I know Eric said with the reopening committees that we're going to have, we're going to create some FAQ docs as well to post online so people can continue to refer to those. Because the questions are great questions, and so not to keep repeating themselves, repeating ourselves over time, which, again, we don't mind. So we have this, the email account, which we've publicized in the presentation tonight. We will also, again, put on the website again with the presentation how you can tune into that meeting on Thursday night. You can do so, again, we'll put it in writing, but it's going to be on the BCAT Facebook government page, as this meeting is tonight. And you can ask questions in the chat. I believe Jen Dodge from BCAT also said that they could make a phone line available so that folks from BCAT could feed us questions that are coming in on the phone line. And what we would like to include with those questions, again, is your name and the school, just so people know that we're getting representation from across the district, and we're trying to answer as many questions as possible. So again, and we don't plan on this being the last thing we do on BCAT between now and August 14th. There's going to be more opportunities. We wish we could all have a large meeting together and, and, like in an auditorium, but obviously, that's not an option right now. So we're trying to use some of the tools that are available to us, again, to answer as many questions in the 90-minute period of time as we can. This is not going to be the only opportunity to answer questions. And as the presentation outlined earlier, we're just making an initial, we're trying to do the homework that the Department of Ed asked us to do for July 31st. And that comprehensive plan, I think, is the one that we're really going to be communicating more with you on between now and that August 14th date, when that is due, to make sure that all of the voices are being heard from across the district.
And, and again, just to stress what Patrick just said, I think what we also might try to do, because this is such a broad conversation, some of our future BCAT presentations might be much more targeted, and they'll be filmed. So we might do, for instance, a BCAT presentation just on transportation. So if people have transportation questions or issues, we can get more in-depth on a particular, on a particular topic. You know, we might have an elementary night, a preschool night, a high school night, just because I think we have people who have a lot more specific knowledge. And I also think, as we move along closer to the start of school, I think the questions are going to get much more, much more targeted. So I think our presentations are going to need to be targeted as well. So.
And that is 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Thanks for asking the question, Martha, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. I'll also tomorrow make sure that I send another email out. Sorry to hit people with another email, but I'll send it out through our Aspen system. So I apologize. But again, I don't want anybody to miss the opportunity if they want to tune in on Thursday.
Okay, could, could you, I'm really, at this point, going to try to move the agenda along. But just very quickly, the rooms that don't have desks, what are you going to do about tables versus desks?
Chris, we're going to try to put the chairs. I think the tables just don't seat as many children, but we're going to try to separate the kids on either side of the, on either side of their tables. We may redistribute some desks because we don't need all of them at the high school and middle school. But obviously, a high school desk for a first grader doesn't work. So we're going to have to try to solve that differently.
Okay. Classes without, classrooms without windows at the high school, for instance, you use in those classrooms?
We might. I'd like some data on air quality before we make that, before we make that decision. Because the high school does exchange air in all classrooms. I just need to make sure that it's working and that we have some air quality before we do that. Mark is planning a contingency, so he is planning potentially for other rooms for teachers to need them. But kids, students change classes at the high school, so it adds another trafficking management problem. So he needs to figure that out.
Okay, and, and for the little kids, are you hoping to encourage mask use for all of the ones that can possibly handle it?
Again, Madam Chair, I think the group that I'm working with from Harvard Public Health and Brigham and Women's, they are providing a higher standard than the state is providing. They are encouraging all students to wear masks. And so I guess I would recommend that to the committee. I think ultimately, sort of the standard we choose is going to be something that the committee has to make. But I'm recommending all students and all staff be, be in masks.
Okay. Is there anyone on the committee who has anything else to ask before we move on? Okay, good. So Eric, next on our agenda.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, a lot of the following agenda items are just communication agenda items. So I shared, I shared with the committee the Simon Youth Foundation District Partner Report. And I did that just for, for several reasons. I think I wanted to highlight the Simon Academy at Burlington. For some parents who might not be familiar and some of the new committee members, we do have an Evening Academy. We have a, a high school program that meets four evenings a week. And Jill Graham, one of our outstanding science teachers, is, I call her the principal of the Evening Academy. She is the administrator and she has a, an excellent Evening Academy teachers. The teachers actually don't all come from the high school. Some come from elementary schools. But they enjoy working with kids who may struggle with a traditional high school experience. Many committee members have attended the Evening Academy graduation, which is a very moving, moving experience. And I'm going to encourage Mr. Foss and Ms. Bond to attend. If we ever can have graduations again, encourage you to attend that. If you noticed, again, I don't want to go through all of it because we're running short of time. But I think you can see that partnering with Simon Youth Foundation, again, Simon is the Simon company that owns the Burlington Mall. They traditionally provide partnerships. They provide space in their retail malls for high school programming. They sort of created a, a special partnership with us where the program exists in Burlington High School, but they still partner with us. They've renovated the classroom three or four years ago. And you can see that they provided, I think in the school committee packet, I think Sharon summarized for you that, I want to make sure I get this correct. That we have, we had nine graduates this year from the, from the Evening Academy. And the Simon Foundation awarded $7,000 in post-secondary scholarships to these students. And they also provided some enhancement grant money for the program itself, close to $6,000. So in your, in your packet, it shows that I think the Simon Foundation has provided over $50,000 to our Evening Academy students in the four years of our partnership, which has been remarkable. And then they also do a lot of work with these alternative students. Again, these are students who may not be successful or potentially may not complete high school. So again, they, they do a lot of surveying with these graduates. They have, I think, close to 50 programs across the country. And so, and the students consistently state across all their programs that it's the relationships with their teachers that gets them to finish through their diploma. And I would say our Evening Academy teachers are really exceptional at creating strong relationships with these students. They have to be graduation eligible, which means they have to have passed MCAS. And they have to have full-time jobs to participate in the Evening Academy in most cases. And again, 71% of the student, the Evening Academy students who are associated with Simon Youth Foundation across the country considered dropping out of high school. And so we have a high, high percentage of people who are may, again, may not, their life circumstances may have them struggling with high school and the Evening Academy. I just wanted to point out to the committee, I think is a very successful program due to the efforts of Principal Graham, Jill Graham, and, and, and her, and the teachers that work in the Evening Academy. So again, largely informational. Madam Chair, we also have a second reading on a remote learning policy, which is the next agenda item. And again, this is a policy that was promoted by MASC. And again, we had a first reading at June 23rd. And I, again, I'm recommending the school committee adopt the remote learning policy, IHBHE, and the remote learning addendum policy, IHBHE-E. I think remote learning is going to be something that we need to prepare for. And I think that this policy will help us, help us have it take shape underneath that policy.
Okay, is, do we, are we ready to vote on this? Okay, Martha says we are. Can I have a motion to approve the remote learning policy? Don't all speak of this. Carl, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Catherine, don't be so enthusiastic. Okay, Catherine, second.
That is muted. They're both muted.
I offered a nice, I'll second, I, I mute, I forgot to unmute. Sorry about that. Where is the spot? I'll take it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the remote learning policy. Let's see, Martha, Simon.
Aye.
Catherine Bond. Did you say aye?
Sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
Carl, Foss?
Aye.
Tom Murphy, are you there?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye. So the remote learning policy is now passed. The next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is the Seal of Biliteracy. Again, this is more of a, an announcement, but I think it's also a celebration. The, the Seal of Biliteracy is an award granted by the state in recognition of students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by graduation. So again, it's an award granted by the state of Massachusetts for students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by graduation. Burlington had 29 students earn this Seal of Biliteracy. The 29 students earned the Seal of Biliteracy in four different languages, Latin, Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian. And they have different categories of the seal. And one of those categories, or the highest one, is, is distinction. So we had five Latin Seals of Biliteracy with one distinction. We had 20 Spanish students recognized for their Seal of Biliteracy with 15 being with distinction. We had one Portuguese student recognized for our Seal of Biliteracy with distinction. And we had three, three students recognized for a Seal of Biliteracy in Italian. So again, I just wanted to commend those students. I love that the state is recognizing students for multilingualism instead of it being a problem. It's, it's now celebrated and we have many students who are going to benefit from having the ability to speak more than, more than one language. So again, wanted to make sure that we not only are talking logistics, but we're also still celebrating our student accomplishments, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, I thought I saw there was one student who I believe got a Seal of Biliteracy in two languages, but one of them was German, which you didn't mention.
On you, Eric.
I, I, I did. You, you are correct. It was Spanish and German. I just, I, I didn't mention the German. So you, you are correct.
Five different languages, including ones that we don't teach at our high school. And I, I just want to reinforce how wonderful it is that the state has done this. And now this is our first year doing this. This is a, a seal that goes with the diploma graduation. And I'm just so proud of our students for maintain, gaining and maintaining this bilingualism or multilingualism. Thank you.
Sharon messaged me to vote on the addendum to the, I believe it's the Remote Learning Policy Addendum.
I will move that we vote to approve the addendum.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the addendum to the Remote Learning Policy. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, Mrs. Simon?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monica votes aye, 5-0. Okay, back to our list. Seal of Biliteracy, that's great. Does anyone else have any comments? No? Okay, school building facilities update?
Madam Chair, it's, it's, it's getting a little bit late, but I think I, I just want to make sure that we keep the school building facilities update. On the agenda, we have to continue to pursue upgrades to the high school. We're getting more and more questions about the HVAC systems based on COVID and, and the planning. And I think, I, I think we need to continue to answer those questions. What I'd like to do on a future agenda, Bob, is maybe put together some slides specifically on air quality, the air quality test results, and more specific information on the HVAC, HVAC systems. Specifically because I think a lot of parent and teacher questions are going to be focused on those in particular. We do have a pending application in with the MSBA for new elementary school. So we won't hear on that until December, again, unless all those deadlines get pushed, which, which may happen. But that doesn't mean that we can't continue to discuss needing to get the HVAC system changed over, updated at, at the, at the high school. And Bob, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm saying this again because we're being repetitive. We have a, a warrant article. We have a designer chosen. We have a warrant article that has funding for the new design for bid documents for an HVAC system for the high school specifically. And then did we all, I think we also were awarded funding this town meeting for some money for some initial design work that might be associated with that renovation. Is that correct?
Yes, Dr. Condi, that, that is correct. Two separate warrant articles, one from last year, one from this current year. One specifically for HVAC systems at the high school and one a little bit more broad. That gives us a little bit of flexibility to have this designer or engineer architect firm help us with the design of the high school. Correct?
Now, again, please, I'm, I'm not judging. We've, we've had a lot of work to do. I just want to know the status of the HVAC work in particular. That, have, have we, have we asked the firm or are the firm that we've selected to design a new HVAC system with bid documents so that we can get a firm price and approach sort of the, the, the town with that project?
We have not done that formally. We've had initial conversations. Again, we're relatively new in the designer selection process. And then even selecting that, getting through the contract to actually put us with the ability to work with them. You know, obviously takes a little bit of time as well, too. So again, we're really in the initial stages of right now, starting to have those conversations in a more formal level. But yes, we are in the process of starting those. But I do not have any formalized quotes or anything to present to you all or the school committee.
So again, just through the chair to the committee, I'm not putting Bob on the spot by asking that question. I'm responsible for the timing of that. So I, I just honestly haven't gotten to it. But I do know we have the need and will be, will, I just think we need to have a focused conversation on the high school HVAC system at an upcoming meeting so we can spend some time on it and we can get more detailed activity. And we will certainly fit in that work with this firm in the, in the, certainly in, in, I think in the coming months. So we'll, we'll make sure that that work gets completed.
Okay, any questions? All right, go ahead, Eric, the last item that you have. I have a couple of items after yours.
No, I, again, Madam Chair, I just wanted to finish up. Bob, we had some summer projects, just some progress reports. I think the, we got a, actually a jumpstart on some of the summer projects because kids were out of the buildings. So are the Francis Wyman, is the fire alarm completed?
Yes, the fire alarm is completed. We do have a walkthrough in two weeks with the fire department, but it is complete. The air conditioning in that building is complete, has been tested and been running. So those are two major warrant articles in the same building. Right now, we are working on a third warrant article for that building, which is the library. New bookcases, new carpets, new furniture. Carpet was just installed and completed today. So again, we're making progress to try to get that, that pack on track for the start of the school year. We have bathrooms under construction there and other buildings in the district as well, too. Again, our custodians and our maintenance department right now are working non-stop. Another big one that we need to talk about, of course, is the wood floor at the high school. We have worked out with one of our contractors to schedule that job. We're looking for an August 24th date, which again, is pretty tight. So it looks like the wood has been ordered. We expect to get some deliveries of that wood in-house within a couple of weeks. It needs to be acclimated before they finish their install. But we look to have some demolition starting next week on that wood gym. And again, all these are the intention of being done before the start of school. So we hope these contractors can stay on those tasks. So that's something that I'll be, you know, trying to make sure that we can take care of. But like again, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that even though I mean, I'm sorry, the custodians and maintenance got a jump on the summer start. They still have a lot of work that they've already accomplished, but still a lot more work to get done. So I just want to praise them for all the work that they've done so far.
And again, Bob, I would echo that praise. I think they've been working really hard. Something, again, for a future conversation that I just want to make sure I plant the seed in your heads is the custodians do really rely on their summer, on their summer support. And those students have been working really hard. They're typically college students who come back for summer employment. We may need to try to extend some of their work just for move furniture around. We have a lot of furniture that we need to move out of classrooms to create some space. So we're talking about that. But again, the seed I wanted to plant in your head is we typically pay for the summer help using our building rental revenue. And again, we're not going to be renting our, our buildings. So again, I don't know what the issue is going to be, but you, our funding source for our summer custodial help is, we're not going to have that fund. So it may be something we need to address again, far later on. I just wanted to plant that seed today. We do, we do rely on them. And again, I think the custodial crews and the maintenance crews have been just doing outstanding work. I'm in the buildings. I see them following the safety protocols. They're all in masks. And I think they're being very, very careful. And we're going to really rely on them in terms of their cleaning ability once we get students back in school. So thanks, Bob. And again, I, I didn't mean to cut off the debate on the buildings. I just think it's getting late and I think the HVAC system at the high school deserves a, a full agenda item on an upcoming meeting. If you agree, again, I serve at the pleasure of the committee.
Sounds great.
All right.
Warrant articles?
Warrant articles. Hope Nicole, Nicole is still with us. Again, Ms. Koshia is requesting the school committee approve the closeout of five completed warrant articles on the following page. Again, it's going to be recommended the school committee approve the closeout of each warrant article individually. Again, for the new committee members, when we ask town meeting to support a particular project or warrant article, that dollar, get those dollars, if approved, get assigned to that task. We can only spend the money on the project that we've identified. So if we have, when the project is complete, if we have money left over, we close out the warrant. Or even, even if we don't have money left over, we close out that article when the projects are complete. So Nicole, did I make sure I'm being accurate?
You're on, Nicole. Can't hear you. Maybe you're not on mute, but we can't hear you.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll go through these. And again, I hope I'll get this correct. So the, the fiscal year of the community custodial fees in 2019, the original appropriation was $43,000, $43,002, sorry. The revised budget is the same. We've expended $43,002. So we've used 100% of that money. Madam Chair, could I get a vote to close the community custodial fee warrant from 2019?
So moved. Martha?
Oh.
Second.
Thank you. Eric, you have to vote on the ones that a hundred percent used?
They said, Nicole's asking for a vote on each warrant article individually. They said Nicole's asking for a vote on each warrant article individually, so that's what I'm doing.
I understand. I just, I don't recall voting on ones that have been used completely in the past. All right, it's moved and seconded to vote to close out the, the Community Custodial Fees warrant article for the year two thousand nineteen. All those in favor, Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
All right, he's gone. Ms. Monica votes aye, it's four-zero.
Okay, the Francis Wyman Air Conditioning warrant article also from two thousand nineteen. The original appropriation was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There was no transfers or movement. The revised budget remained the same at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We expended the hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the project. There's a zero balance. And request the school committee to close out the Francis Wyman Air Conditioning warrant from two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
You're back, Tom. It's been moved and seconded to close out the Francis Wyman Air Conditioning warrant article, which was completely used. All those in favor, Ms. Simon?
That was Eric.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monica votes aye, that's five-zero.
Thank you. School, the Pine Glen Sewer Pump Project was a warrant in two thousand twenty. The original appropriation was fourteen thousand dollars. We requested that town meeting make a eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase to that warrant. So the revised budget was twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. We expended all twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that project is completed, so I'm requesting the school committee close the Pine Glen Sewer Pump warrant article from two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to close out the Pine Glen Sewer Pump warrant article. What year was it?
Two thousand twenty.
My phone just stopped showing me the picture. Eric, what year was that warrant article?
Two thousand twenty.
Okay, for two thousand twenty. All those in favor, Ms. Simon?
I vote aye.
Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, it's five-zero.
All right, two more. The Burlington High School Computer Lab, again, a warrant article from two thousand twenty. The original appropriation was thirty-three thousand dollars. There were no adjustments. That, we expended thirty-three thousand dollars, requesting that the school committee close out the Burlington High School Computer Lab warrant article from two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close out the
The computer's always going.
Close out the Burlington, what is it? I can't find it.
It's the Burlington High School Computer Lab from two thousand twenty.
Okay, to close out the warrant article for the Burlington High School Computer Lab for two thousand twenty. All right, now I have it back. All those in favor, Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monica votes aye. Tom seems to be gone again.
I thought, I heard him say aye, Madam Chair.
Yes.
That's five-zero.
And the last one, and thank you for your patience, is the Marshall Simons Middle School Cafeteria Tables, also a warrant from two thousand twenty. The original appropriation was sixty-five thousand dollars. We reduced that request by eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, so our revised budget was fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. We expended fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twelve cents of that amount. So we have a balance of eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents that when you close out the town, when you close out the warrant article, will get returned to town. So again, asking that you close out the Marshall Simons Middle School Cafe Table warrant article from two thousand twenty.
I so moved. This means that that eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents will go back to the Town General Fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close out the warrant article for the Marshall Simons Cafeteria Tables with eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents going back to the town.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, just one, one quick correction. Nicole typed in it goes to free cash, Ms. Simon, not to the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay, it goes, it goes to free cash. And that's for two thousand twenty. All those in favor, Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, that's five-zero. Okay, you got anything else, Eric?
No, Madam Chair.
I got a couple of quick things. First, someone asked earlier, well, about the after-school program and paying. I, I just wanted to make the comment that the after-school program is self-sufficient, that the staff in the after-school program is paid out of the money that's paid into it. So that's not out of the school budget. Next item I have is, I had asked Patrick and Eric a while back, and then Mr. Foss asked me about having a school committee Facebook page. I understand that that may be something that you don't want to tackle at the moment. I don't know, but maybe for the next meeting you could, Patrick could give us some sort of a response on that. I believe we're looking, if we do it at all, I believe we're looking for something like Wilburn has, which is a place for us to announce things as opposed to anything that would involve a discussion or a debate or any of that. And I understand.
If you need any help with that Facebook page, Eric, just give me a call.
You can't do it on an Etch A Sketch.
All right, Patrick, I'm just giving you feel wanting to come up with all the reasons why it's a pain and
I just want to ask one question. What would be different than what we post on the district page? We don't have discussions there, and we post notices for people to be aware of things.
I don't know, maybe you could add us, maybe you could add us as having access to it so that we could post things. I don't know. Think about it between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Not at this moment, but I will, I will gather my thoughts for the next meeting.
Mr. Foss, why don't, why don't we have a conversation as well so we can talk offline, too, about what your thinking is? I'm honestly just worried about the bandwidth, the capacity of staff to even maintain a page like that. We're, we're stretched pretty thin right now, so again, want to try to meet your expectations. But if we could talk about it, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, my final thing is I have had, I would say comments, but I think most of them are digs, about meeting online versus in person, and yet making decisions about people going back to school. So I would like to explain that personally, I want very much to meet in person and not online. I think this is a difficult way to do it. It, it doesn't allow the committee to spend any time together to get to know each other. I talked to Amy today about it in an email. And the concern is not that the school committee can't meet and be so many feet apart, whatever's necessary. The concern is that we have parents who want to attend, and our room will not hold everyone with social distancing. So unless we can either meet in another place where there's plenty of room for social distancing for people who want to come to the meeting, or unless we have like a dedicated TV room where people could ask us, could watch it and ask questions, a room that was bigger, or two rooms. The problem is the number of people who want to attend the meeting. And ordinarily, we don't have a lot of people attending our meetings, but given the situation we're in, we do. So it isn't that we don't want to meet in public. It's that unless we figure out a way to do it, and I don't think we're going to be able to meet on the football field as it gets later and later in the season. I just want you to know that we do, at least I can speak for myself, I want to meet in person and not this way.
Madam Chair, we, we can ask some questions ourselves, too. I'll talk to my colleagues if anyone has a creative solution to that. I think the governor is going to be updating maybe guidance for public bodies as, as we move forward or get through the summer as well. So I, I hear you that you want us to meet back in person, and maybe, maybe we'll have an, an option or some sort of solution to that. I just, one of the challenges we had is we were expecting a change in the guidance, and we didn't have enough days to change the meeting notice. So today, tonight was going to be remote no matter what, but we'll, we'll look into possibilities. Sharon and I will do some research for, for the August meeting.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to do it in a way that makes it difficult, like, you know, really, I'm not up for the football field and the duck and mosquitoes. But if it was a way that we could do it using our usual space, I think that would be good. I just don't know that there is.
All right, we'll, we'll look forward.
Okay. Does anyone get anything else they want to bring up tonight? Anything else to come before the committee? All right, I guess it's time for a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss? Carl?
I saw his mouth move, he said aye.
Yeah.
Sorry, aye.
Yeah. Mrs. Monica votes aye, and we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.